Councilmember Soria. Councilmember Carbasi.
Here.
Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Maxwell.
President.
Councilmember Brettafield.
Here.
Vice President Asparza.
President.
And Council President Chavez.
Here. All right, with that, let's move on to our invocation, and we will have our invocation today by Pastor Darryl Duchaine from Faith Worship Center. Mr. Duchaine?
I'll take the mute button off, I'm sorry. Good morning, everyone. Just want to first thank Councilmember Asparza for this opportunity to do your invocation on today, and I'm going to ask if you would all bow your heads with me as we pray. Dear heavenly Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself and for the measure of wealth we need to fulfill our callings. Thank you for another day filled with opportunities to be a blessing to somebody, to help somebody today. We thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. And thank you most of all for your unconditional love you give to us each and every day, even when we don't deserve it, from your boundless and gracious nature. In scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor. I pray for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this council that is gathered together today to discuss and make decisions that affect the lives of those they serve. So God, I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Grant them a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people. Grant a keen thirst for justice and righteousness. Grant them the confidence in what is good and fitting for our city. Grant them the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. And grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today, dear God. You said in Proverbs sixteen to nine that a man's or a woman's heart plans his or her way, but the Lord directs their steps. So please give an assurance of what would be, what would please you and what would benefit those who work and live in and around our beloved city of Fresno. We thank you and we praise you in the strong and mighty name of Jesus Christ, I pray. Thank you, Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Councilmember Brettafield, you want to lead us in the pledge?
Thank you for that, Pastor Duchaine. Good to have you back.
Oh, you're welcome.
All right, city clerk, which items, and this will be for the benefit of the public? I'm sorry, who's speaking?
I think it's our interpreter, but just to let you know Esmeralda is on.
All right, city clerk, for the benefit of the public, I'm going to ask a couple of questions, just to make sure that folks know which agenda items are being pulled or continued by the sponsors or various council members. Which items have been removed from the agenda or continued by the sponsor of the item?
Yes. File ID one A twenty-one dash zero one seven, approval of minutes for April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one regular meeting and the special emergency meeting is being continued to the May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one council agenda by the city clerk's office. File ID twenty-one dash five-nine-nine, item one T, an ordinance for introduction amending FMC section four dash two oh three and four dash two oh four concerning disposition of city real property is being requested to be continued to the May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one agenda by Councilmember Maxwell and Vice President Asparza. And that is all for items being pulled to a future date.
All right, any items being requested to be removed from the agenda or continued by council members? All right. City clerk, any changes to the agenda items?
Yes, there is one change. File ID twenty-one dash five-zero-six, item one E, actions pertaining to the Leaky Acres groundwater facility. This item is an administrative correction. The second to the last paragraph states that the insurance certificates have been approved by the Risk Management Department. We need to clarify the insurance certificates are subject to approval by the Risk Management Division.
Do any, do any council members wish to register a no vote, abstention, or recusal on any consent items?
Council President?
Yes, council member.
Maybe I didn't hear it correctly. Was item one you polled for contested consent?
We haven't gotten there yet.
My apologies. Thank you.
Any other items council members want to pull or from consent calendar for discussion?
Yes, there are a few items that are being requested. File ID twenty-one dash five-two-seven, item one F, resolution authorizing the preparation and submission of fiscal assistance application to the California State Water Resource Control Board is being requested to be moved to the contested consent for further discussion by Councilmember Arias. File ID twenty-one dash five-three-eight, item one N, approve a three-year agreement with an option to extend for one additional year with the County of Fresno to reserve five bed spaces in the County of Fresno jail is being requested to be moved to the contested consent for further discussion by Councilmember Arias. File ID twenty-one dash five-nine-six, item one R, ordinance regarding the public transparency action, I apologize, is being requested by Councilmember Arias to be moved to the contested consent for further direction, discussion.
And what item number was that?
That was item one R.
One R.
And last is file ID twenty-one dash six hundred, item one U, award a service agreement to Gen Fair is being requested to be moved to the contested consent by Councilmember Maxwell for further discussion.
All right, so we got item one F, one N, one R, and one U that will be discussed, contested consent.
Correct.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended, so moved?
I wanted to pull some items too.
Some items?
Yep.
What items, Councilmember Brettafield?
I'd like to pull item one I.
One I. To contested consent?
Yes.
Okay.
One S and one T.
One S and one T. All right, any other, any other items?
T. One S and one T.
I got by Councilmember Brettafield, I have one I, one S, and one T. Is that correct, Councilmember Brettafield?
Yes.
One T was tabled to the next meeting.
Okay, then we'll remove that one.
All right, do I have a motion? I think it was Councilmember Carbasi made the motion. Second. By myself. Any opposition? Seeing none, motion passes. All right, let's move on to council member reports and comments, and I know we have Councilmember Soria joining us online. I'll go in numerical order. Councilmember Soria, you have any reports or comments?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So I just wanted to make an announcement that we are having a neighborhood cleanup on Shields and West on Saturday, May first, from nine AM to eleven AM. Volunteers are encouraged to come over to El Toro Loco Grocery Store. That's where folks will be meeting. We're going to be focused on cleaning residential and commercial areas near that grocery store. So I also want to just thank the administration, all the volunteers that came out by Lyons Park and other areas of the city like the Tower and even west of the ninety-nine where folks were cleaning up as part of the, you know, Unified Fresno effort. Thank you to everyone who participated. Also, I have, what I kicked off last weekend, there's a survey happening or being circulated by Art Office. It's for the Emerson Avenue, Median Island. We are trying to beautify these median islands that are right now being utilized as a trail and just as a place where folks are, you know, using it for jogging or walking, and so we're trying to beautify it and really make it a trail as it is indicated in our park's master plan. And so we're asking folks to fill out the survey. You can get the survey by going on to our social media platforms and make sure that you share it with folks and tell us what you want to see. Also, on this Sunday, May second at four PM, I will be participating in a panel discussion on the movie called Motherlode, which is a virtual, we're doing a virtual screening that will highlight the global movement to replace cars with purpose-built bikes. This is in sponsorship with the Fresno County Bicycle Coalition. We are partnering with them to screen this movie virtually. So if you have the time, join us on Sunday, May second at four PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Soria. Now we will have Councilmember Carbasi. I believe you have a special guest with us.
Thank you for your patience.
I like the way Councilmember Carbasi was able to sneak in a mini proclamation for his council comments. But it's for a worthy cause, so we'll allow it.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. President. So today, I have the honor of inviting Argo, our canine. Come on in. Come on, folks. We have Sergeant Scatsumari here and Lieutenant Card as well. Argo is a police canine who was doing his duty and about, was it a month ago? Officer Sturgeon? Two weeks ago, and he's already back. Two weeks ago, that he unfortunately was stabbed multiple times, and you can see he's still recovering, but he's doing really well. Now, Argo is a two-and-a-half-year-old Belgian Malinois, born in the Ukraine. He was brought over to the States nine months and became a member of the Fresno Police Canine Unit in November of two thousand nineteen. You've been on the job as long as I have. His only handler has been Officer Brian Sturgeon. Argo is full of energy and he loves his job, as you can see here. He's a trained patrol canine, but also in the process of becoming a bomb detection pup. On his downtime, he is at home resting and enjoying his family, playing with his toys, and when warm enough, swimming in the pool. He is a shining example of a canine and handler bond. Working with Officer Sturgeon, they have been through a lot, but one thing is consistent, they have each other's back, and that's exactly what happened two weeks ago. So Argo is pretty excited, but we have a certificate for you, and Lieutenant and Sergeant, why don't you come up if you don't mind? And Sarah, I think Sarah, if you don't mind, you can get the phone. My own dog unfortunately is not doing too well, so, you know, they really are people's best friend, and I'm glad to see that we also have dogs in public service, and he's excited. I'm going to give this to you, Sergeant, and I want to thank you and the department for everything you do to keep people safe, and especially to Argo, because he almost gave the ultimate sacrifice, and we have some treats for him, if you don't mind, Lieutenant. So I'm told his favorite snack are pill pockets. I know it's odd, but we have some, and we've got the big pack for him and a toy. So this is a Kong, so I don't think he'll be able to tear it apart for maybe a day or two. Here I. Yep. What do you think, buddy? Mayor, do you want to say anything, Mayor?
Yeah, Argo is a hero, and there's no question what these canines do day in and day out to keep people safe, to track down criminals, and to really protect the citizens of Fresno is incredible. And what Argo went through here recently, we're very, very fortunate he's alive and very grateful for the medical care that he received. And Brian Sturgeon, I can attest firsthand, is a superior canine handler, been involved in a lot of incidents over the years, and Argo's his true partner. So, Argo, thank you. Thank you for your service.
Officer Sturgeon, would you like to say anything about your partner?
All I can say is, is that day, he did have my back, and I couldn't have asked for anything more from him. He's been a great partner, and I'm just fortunate and glad that he was there with me that day, and he helped bring it to a successful resolution. And I've been so pleased with his performance that day, so, thank you.
I just want to thank the recognition and this moment, just to appreciate Argo and Officer Sturgeon and our officers who display courage every day out there protecting our community. We're grateful for the opportunity. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to come down here today and allow him to be at least seen. He's gone through a lot, and his recovery rate is just beyond surprising. He's ready to get back out there and work, and having a wonderful handler and having great guys in my unit makes this job so much easier for all of us, so we're happy to have him back.
You all forgot one thing. He's a good boy. And the entire council signed this, and we really do honor Argo and his service, and thank you so much. If any of my colleagues I could say anything, you're more than welcome to.
Councilmember Carbasi, could you hold the, I think some of the council members wanted to go and take a picture with Argo as well, so.
Let's all do that, absolutely. Thanks, Sarah. I know you want the toy, I know. Now, none of you better have any contraband on you. He's going to find it.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Carbasi. Councilmember Arias?
Thank you, Council President. Just want to say a couple of thank yous to the administration. One for the, I had two items on the agenda today. The application to connect the Palms Mobile Home Park to the city's water system. Thank you. Those folks have been struggling for quite some time to be able to tap into good quality drinking water. I know we're just at the application phase, but do you want to acknowledge the administration for doing that? And the second item is the one F, which will clarify during contested consent, but another thank you for keeping us going under North Point Settlement Agreement and submitting the application to connect the South Fresno area into the water sewer system as well. And then I do have one request, since I've given you two thank yous, I have one request. I think that's the trade-off usually. One request is an update on the downtown safety concerns that have been expressed. I've received quite a bit of emails from property owners and businesses in downtown. I know we made some adjustments, given the fact that we have a hundred officers on long-term medical leave and sixty or seventy vacancies, so, but we need an update on how we're going to deal with the increased property crimes in the downtown area. That would be great. Thank you. That's all my report for today.
All right, Councilmember Maxwell?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick thank yous. Wanted to thank Mark Standriff and everyone that came out this past weekend for the Great American Cleanup. I think we probably had close to around fifty folks come throughout all of Fresno to the airport district to clean up around that area. It was a really great showing. We cleaned up tons of trash, and we've already started planning the next cleanup for the Cedar Corridor next month, the month of May. We're going to be meeting up likely around Granite Park and dedicating an entire day for cleaning that Cedar Corridor. So thank you to Mark and everybody that made this past weekend possible. I also want to thank all of the folks who helped sponsor us for our last ten trees, for our one-hundred days, one-hundred trees initiative. We planted our last hundred, we planted our last ten trees at Robinson Park last Thursday, Earth Day. I want to thank Mona Cummings, the CEO of Tree Fresno. She was, you know, super helpful through the whole process and actually donated all one hundred trees for this project. It was National Poetry Month, so we also had a few of the sixth graders from Robinson Elementary School come out and recite some poetry before we did the tree planting. So thank you to Principal Kelly Austin of Robinson Elementary, Mona Cummings, and everybody who came out that made that event such a special day. And that'll conclude my remarks. Council President, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brettafield? Councilman, Vice President Asparza?
Yes, I will keep it brief today. So Great American Cleanup this past Saturday was, I describe as a wild success. Appreciate the administration and their efforts there. I started out the morning Roosevelt High School, where we had over eighty volunteers. Made my way over to Fort Miller as well, so we had a few spots throughout the district, and I think everyone had a great time, and I think it was a success. On Sunday morning, joined my colleagues as well as the mayor in welcoming Southwest Airlines officially. We got to watch California One, the airplane touchdown, sort of marked the first flight, so very, very exciting times for our city. That'll be it.
All right, thank you, Vice President Asparza. I'll just be brief. Want to thank the administration, Mayor. Thank you for the big cleanup we had. I think we had over eleven hundred volunteers southeast Fresno, and I'd also thank your team, Mark Standriff, or as I call you guys, Mr. Clean and Mr. Clean, for the hard work. I know it's not easy to, you know, marshal all those resources and really get those volunteers, and I want to especially thank all the volunteers that came out, especially the ones in southeast Fresno. Got a lot of good feedback from just the coordination, the team, and I think this event has turned into a weekly event that you started with. I think the best way to describe it is a movement now, and it's a movement to improve our city and beautify our city and clean it up, and I think it's really paying off. I think people are more than just noticing now. They're starting to want to be part of that effort, so I wanted to publicly thank you. And then I also want to announce and invite members of the public. On Sunday, May second, we will kick off our first Cruisin' for Peace event out in Kings Canyon and Willow. We'll start the procession from there, head towards downtown on Kings Canyon Ventura, and then end up in the parking lot at Chuchansi Park. So myself, Councilmember Arias, the mayor, Councilmember Carbasi, and I want to invite my colleagues too, if they have some time, to come down and kick it off. It'll be a family-friendly, fun event. We're going to invite our food vendors. Mr. Lopez, who's the first interim president of the Association for Food Vendors, is actually working on getting some of our food vendors that will be staging there. We'll have the vehicles, lowrider vehicles there set up, and folks can come out and have a good time and just send a really positive message that, one, we, you know, we obviously are working towards bringing the community together, Cruisin' for Peace, and more importantly, supporting our food vendors out in our community, whether they sell corn on the cob, flowers, raspados, and everything in between. As you can probably tell, I'm a big fan of their food, and we really want to send that message that we support them. So with that, I will conclude my comments. Mayor, city manager, if you guys have some comment?
Sure. Thank you, Council President, and let me, let me just start out by echoing a few things, but thanking all of the council members that have embraced Beautify Fresno, and all the council members have been volunteering on weekends, and especially this last weekend where we had twelve hundred volunteers come out and ultimately removed ten thousand five hundred pounds of trash from our city. That's a lot of paper cups and paper bags when you consider that. And also for the volunteers that removed over four thousand square feet of graffiti from our city, and that was so, so important. And then last Friday, I had the opportunity to go out with our graffiti abatement team as well and spray over graffiti in some of our industrial areas, and as we all know, there's no shortage of graffiti in our city, and they, they do an incredible job as well. And then this morning, city manager and I, about five-thirty, went out and met with all of our sanitation workers and thanked them for what they do for Beautify Fresno and cleaning up our city. They do things so quietly behind the scenes, whether it's part of the homeless task force or the operation cleanup. They do a tremendous job every single day, so I want to just say publicly thank you to them. And, you know, after Beautify Fresno event, we had a big celebration over there by Chuchansi, had DJs come out, our DJ come out, food trucks, and several hundred people came out, and it was, it was a nice celebration for our city. So thank you, all of you, for participating. I got to watch our city manager out there dancing, and you probably ought to stick to being a city manager after what I watched, but thank you, Tommy, for your support as well. And then last night, we had our Commission on Police Reform First Implementation Team meeting. It was well-attended. Chairman Baines led the effort and assigned various subcommittees for the recommendations and also set some future dates. So it's a really energetic commission, and I look forward to their work and what they're going to do for us in the future. And then lastly, again, thank you for the council for coming out Sunday for participating in the inaugural flight of Southwest Airlines. That was a great event, a great day, and it's going to really put us in a competitive edge in terms of economic development in our city, so thank you, and I'll turn the rest over to city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council. A couple of quick things. So we mentioned last week that on May sixth, we're meeting with the Budget Committee, so we'll get them some information on structurally how we're putting the budget together, and so we'll give them some information. All the council will receive the same information that the Budget Subcommittee receives, so we'll get that out to everybody, but we'll meet with them and talk through the mechanics of the elements that we have to put the budget together. The other thing is, we sent out yesterday our sample status report that we have for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, and that's information we're going to be sending to the state as well. They're going to be requiring this report. I will say, if you have a moment, to just look at that report and understand and appreciate the work that our ISD Department did to put that package together, that software package together, it's incredible. I've been asking our staff to look at submitting it for a national award with the way it is put together. It's very impressive, and so we're busily cranking out the applications and receiving them and working our tail off to get people's rents paid with that system, so those are the two, those are the two updates. Thank you very much.
Thank you, city manager. Councilmember Carbasi, just want to make a brief comment?
Yep, my Columbo, just one more thing, moment. On May fifteenth, we're going to have a cleanup event at Logan Park. We have ninety-three spots available. It's going to be great. You know, a lot of residents have reached out about that park. That's the park I used to go to because we didn't have too many parks in Northwest at the time, and it needs a little TLC, and I'm really excited about this Beautify Fresno event. You can go to beautifyfresno.org to sign up, and I also want to thank young Ryan Trevino, who is a junior member of our district, who really reached out to me before the pandemic hit, wanting to do a cleanup event and bring his fellow classmates and a lot of the youth out there to actually get involved in cleaning up the neighborhood, and with Beautify Fresno, we can do that even better. I also want to just mention an article I read in The Bee about young Michael Moreno. He is a high school student at San Joaquin Memorial, and he did something that makes me very proud. He noticed a homeless man named Vince who was going around and asking for help, and he asked him if he was hungry, and Vince said yes, so Michael went to Taco Bell and got, I think, three soft tacos and a drink, and not only just gave him the food, actually invited Vince to sit in the back of the tailgate, eat with him, and talk. And, you know, that's a lot, just having that kind of compassion and. kind of compassion and being able to actually talk to someone, give them an opportunity to vent. You know, you made the city very proud, Michael. You're probably in school not watching. But I hope your parents are, and they should be very proud of you. Thank you for what you did.
Thank you, Councilmember Carbasi. All right. That concludes our Councilmember Reports' Comments. Mayor and City Manager will now move on to Consent Calendar and Unscheduled Communication. We're going to take public comment on all consent, unscheduled, and closed-session items. Brianna, do we have any speakers? Who do we have first? Sorry, Marco.
Gordy Bermudas. We have three now.
Three? Okay. Gordy Bermudas, you have three minutes.
I was, I didn't realize it was me, but it was unmuted. I just, well, I wanted to jump in. This is Brandi, I guess, wanted to thank the young man as well for that compassion and, and also for Mike for highlighting that. And I hope that is something that encourages us to treat our neighbors with, with compassion and as neighbors. I also just wanted to quickly ask for a suggestion regarding publicly announcing different events and meetings and stuff that the suggestion of maybe possibly, I appreciate that you guys put events, that the city puts events on social media. But I ask that maybe there could be increased by making events with Facebook with, with different community meetings and other opportunities to extend and make it more, extend the reach. I know that I went to a really good, I mean, there are several meetings, community meetings that weren't on the city calendar on the website that we're good, like last night's with the, with the housing effects. And realized that a lot of these things aren't necessarily seen, and sometimes they're seen last minute. And I should, I recognize people that would want to be at those meetings, and they don't necessarily catch the post on the, the Facebook page. But, so, ask that maybe if there is ways to be able to increase that, including the idea if there is events, then people can be able to invite people to community meetings, like public hearings and things like that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's our next speaker? Marco?
The next speaker is Lisa Flores.
All right. Ms. Flores, you have three minutes.
Good morning. I'm starting getting all emotional, but as you make decisions today regarding the homeless, and I want you to think about the kids, especially the kids and their families that are along Parkway. U.S. City Council members determine where children reside, the homeless children reside. And you really need to think about placing families away from Parkway. Children are exposed to, are continuing to be exposed to stress and high crime. And I just want you guys to think about that and their reason why. I'm so upset. It's disappointing. I learned that our beloved Noah succumbed to his brain cancer last night. And I just think about the joy and the love, the supernova of giggles he was, and that all children deserve that. And I see you guys as really impacting children's lives. And homeless kids don't deserve to be put on Parkway. They deserve to be put someplace safe, someplace where they can decompress, someplace where their families can decompress and get out of the cycle of homelessness. And each one of you can determine a positive outcome for those children today. And I want you to do it in memory of our beloved Noah that we lost last week. And I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Thank you for that. Next speaker, Marco?
Next speaker is Sidra Ochenero Bermudas.
All right. You have three minutes.
Sidra?
There I am. Hello. Good morning. Thank you for your time. I just wanted to speak on behalf of my wife, Gordy Ochenero Bermudas, who was called earlier but wasn't actually given the opportunity to speak. Someone else spoke for her, or in, in her turn. But she's doing this really incredible ride on a bicycle from San Francisco to Los Angeles. Next week, we leave next Friday. And she's doing it to raise money for porta potties for our homeless community, to be able to place six throughout the Fresno area as well as have them serviced. And it's something that she's been very passionate about for a very long time, serving the homeless community. And, you know, she herself in her past was homeless at one point, and she was addicted to drugs and had a really tumultuous set of circumstances happen to her. And she's been able to pull herself out of that and get sober and is now giving back to the community that she grew up in. She had a neurological event three years ago that was a result of brain damage. And she couldn't speak. She couldn't walk. And, you know, through the help of doctors and, and changing her life again, she was able to reach out to the homeless community. And they were the ones that gave her hope. They were the ones that gave her the strength to continue fighting to get healthy. And, and so, this is her dedication to them, to the people who are on the streets, to the families that are on the streets, and to the families that have members on the streets, whether they know where they're at or not. This is her way of trying to change their lives because they changed hers. And so, I just ask that you individually and collectively as our City Council, stand beside her and support her. She's posting all the time on Facebook and Instagram, her stories. And she goes out every single day to feed them, to clothe them, to talk with them, to sit with them, to check on them. And if her support would, your support would mean so much to her. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Marco, do we have any other speakers?
Yes, we have Des Martinez. And then I apologize, we do have Gordy.
Okay. Des Martinez, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. I wanted to speak on having safe camps in Fresno, California. I know a lot of people are against them, but I feel like the amount of money that we have, we can alleviate the liabilities on the city from leaving individuals on the streets, in the alleys, and on the highways, and have more safe camps around Fresno city and county both together. I wish they would work together on this situation. But have more safe camps is going to save Fresno a lot of money. Like, the amount of money that you guys spend on just cleaning up encampments, we can use those fundings for safe camps, manage safe camps around Fresno City, trying to get the individuals that want help into shelter. With the amount of crimes that happen in homeless encampments, the rapes, the murders, the stabbings, extortion, we can cut down on all the criminal activities that are out in our streets in Fresno, California, if we have safe camps, manage safe camps that are run by the city or the county. It doesn't have to be just one. You guys can work together on this. You guys have the money for it. You have the resources. As far as I'm told, there's resources available for individuals that are seeking shelter and/or housing. It will break down on a lot of stuff, you guys. The food, the trash, the crime, the abandoned buildings being taken over, the amount of police officers that we use for the homelessness. And I just heard about HART. So, congratulations. I'm glad that they're changing Homeless Task Force to HART, and they will be dressed down. So, I appreciate that. But there's more that we can do in our city to save ourselves money here. And it's by having safe camps. Until we get enough affordable housing, it's going to take years, you guys. Like you said, you're going to spend that ninety-three million or whatever over the next four years. We need help today. We need help now. And by the way, doing that is by getting several safe camps up in the Fresno city area to help save us a lot of money, the taxpayers, a lot of money, the city, a lot of headache. I think it's something possible that can be done. It's being done in Santa Rosa right now. And they've been doing it for about six months. I know I've been running mine for ten months now. But, I mean, I think we really should start looking into safe camps, manage safe camps until we get enough shelters or transitional living or even affordable housing. This will work as long as we change the minds of the people that think it won't work. I've proven already, you guys, that it does work. I mean, I've proven it. I just need the city and the county to come together and think of something strategically so we can help more individuals off the streets, like the women and the elders and the vets that are out here being abused daily. The people that want to get off drugs, that are being accustomed by the drug dealers that are out here. Wherever the homeless move to, if you have any addiction in those camps, the criminal activity follows them. So, no matter what camps you guys break up throughout Fresno city, when they move to the next block, so do the criminal activities. So, reduce that by having safe camps, manage safe camps for people that want help. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Des. Marco, who's our last speaker?
Gordy Bermudas.
Yeah. I believe she was going to allow somebody else because their phone wasn't working. So, queue them up and unmute them, please.
Cue up Gordy.
Yeah, the speaker.
I'm here. Can you guys finally hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I have no idea who the other person was, but thank you for letting them speak. And also, I was surprised to hear my wife. She's actually a teacher, so the fact that she took the time to call was amazing. So, I just want to thank you guys for taking the time to hear me again. I want to let you guys know that my ride is next Friday. I am cycling, and I've only trained for four weeks. Why, this is why it's a big deal. I also think it's important that you recognize someone in your community who was homeless. You know, you guys worked really hard to show everything that you guys were doing. And you guys just talked about how you celebrated at Grizzly Park. And I wanted to know, was the homeless invited to come and celebrate what we're celebrating about the homeless? Because they are so important. And I think we need to figure out a way to meet them where they're at and to make them a part of our community and not acclimate them to us, but us acclimate to them. And I know this is a really hard way to look at it, to, to meet them where they're at because, you know, because of their circumstances and their situations. But I've been helping them every day for a year, and I was homeless for three years. And I can say that mental illness is a big part of this. And the fact that we don't provide any sanitary, any place for them to have privacy, to have dignity, to go to the restroom is affecting them even more. And it's just my intention to want to help them and to help you guys and to not put you guys down, but to want to be a part of the solution. And I feel like as a homeless community member who is now a part of, a participant, I, I am a part of society. And I think it's important to recognize those people who have become a part of society so that you give hope to the people who don't think that this is working at all. Thank you, you guys, for your time.
All right. Thank you for those comments. And then we have one, one last speaker. Marco, you could queue that person up.
Okay. Nishaya?
Hi, it is Nishay Balahadia from Mighty Community Advocacy. Real quick, is Councilmember Soria on the panel today?
Ma'am, this is your time to address the council if you want to make your statement.
Right. I'm trying to, I'm trying to address Councilmember Soria, but she's not there.
Yeah, she's online. She can hear you.
Okay. So, for the last, since February of this year, we have been attempting to get Councilmember Soria to follow through on her commitment of funding Mighty Community Advocacy a shelter and along with an ambulance to help with unhoused sexual assault response as she had committed on paper in a signed letter that she would hand over CARES Act funds to Mighty Community Advocacy to help with domestic violence, sexual assault, and CPS cases in her district. And she has continually ignored my, me and my staff when requesting for her to follow through on her commitment to Mighty Community Advocacy. The fact that she has not responded and the fact that she has not followed through on her commitment shows that she is not for domestic violence survivors, not for the survivors in her district, and not for the unhoused people in her district, as we are trying to sit here and help them while she is just ignoring and silencing us. So, I would like for the council to address that Esmeralda Soria has put on paper that she will give us CARES Act money on November 2020, and she still has not followed through on any of her commitments.
Does that conclude your comments, ma'am? Thank, thank you. Thank you for that. Marco, so that concludes our, our public unscheduled communication piece. I'll bring it back to the dais. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent items with the
The move.
items that were pulled earlier?
Second it.
Motion made by Vice President Esparza, seconded by Councilmember Maxwell. And we do have to do a roll call, a vote. So, clerk, could you do a roll call?
Council, Councilmember Soria? Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Councilmember Carbasi?
Yes.
Councilmember Arias?
Yes.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bretafeld?
Yes.
Council Vice President Esparza?
Aye.
And Council President Chavez?
Yes. All right. With that, let's move on to contested consent. I'll take these alphabetical order. We'll start with item 1F that was pulled by Councilmember Arias.
Counsel, I just want to make a motion to approve with one revision that the application will cover the area identified in North Point Settlement Agreement.
All right. Motion was made with that modification, seconded by Councilwoman Soria. Roll call?
We'll have a question.
Oh, Councilmember Bretafeld?
Yeah, I'm wondering, administration, do you have any concerns with that? Okay, so you're fine.
Yes, my apologies, Councilmember Bretafeld. I addressed it with the administration prior and with legal counsel. So, just want to make sure they're, the description's accurate.
All right. Any other questions? All right. So, a motion was made, seconded, roll call?
Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Councilmember Carbasi?
Yes.
Councilmember Arias?
Yes.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bretafeld?
Yes.
Council Vice President Esparza?
Aye.
And Council President Chavez?
Yes. All right. Next up will be item 1I, and it was pulled by Councilmember Bretafeld. Councilmember Bretafeld?
Yeah, question. Just at the end of the staff report in terms of fiscal impact, it says the source of funding for the cost of printing scheduled guides will be local transportation operating funds. And so, I'm wondering about those funds, what you're referring to, particularly since we're doing zero fare right now. Just a question of where the funds, when it says it'll be funded through the local transportation operating funds.
Thank you, Councilmember Bretafeld. Joe Vargas, Assistant Director. Local transportation funds is referring to unrestricted funds. So, funds that we generate through, it could be TDA, Measure C, non-federal funds.
Okay. And so, not fare funds that would be derived from fares?
Correct. I mean, if we were receiving fares, we would, that could be a source for funding this.
Okay. But since we're not, we have to find other ways. Okay.
In the future, yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Bretafeld, seconded by Councilmember Arias in a shocking turn of events. Roll call?
Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Councilmember Carbasi?
Aye on 1I.
Councilmember Arias?
Yes.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bretafeld?
Yes.
Council Vice President Esparza?
Aye.
Council President Chavez?
Very surprised, yes. Next item will be item 1N, and that was pulled by Councilmember Arias.
Yes. Counsel, is the Police Department available for questions?
We can get them up.
Thank you. I do want to make a motion to approve.
All right. Motion by maybe Councilmember Arias, seconded by Councilmember Carbasi. Believe you have a question? No? Who from PD is, is going to speak? Tommy?
We scheduled to talk about our board committee.
Neither one there.
Neither of them.
What was your question, Councilmember Arias? You could start maybe- You can start, maybe?
My question, Counsel, is historically speaking, we use this contract to reduce the amount of car thefts for those repeat offenders. My understanding is that car thefts are down, and shootings are up, so how are we planning to use these beds?
So I can tell you that historically, the dollars have been used to house the most prolific auto thief suspects. However, from time to time, if there was a determination made that there was someone else that needed to occupy that bed who was violent, then that latitude was, was given to the Police Department. In this case, the individuals that are going to be housed in those beds will be the violent offenders. Unless we, you know, have a vacancy, then it would be occupied by somebody from the, who is arrested for auto theft. But they are being used for violent offenders.
So is there any reason why we should continue to describe this as for auto theft folks versus, because, I mean, what I'm struggling with mayor and the Police Department is, we have a record amount of shootings. We keep on getting told that those folks get arrested, then let go. We, we're paying to reserve five beds, why aren't we filling them with those shooters?
I, well, I can just, based on information I've gotten from the police chief, a lot of those individuals that they're arresting are far more than the five beds that we have. So you have a violent gang member who's arrested with a firearm, oftentimes those individuals get released. So when you're limited on five beds, you, you try to identify the one you believe needs to be held in custody the most, and that's how you make those determinations.
And who makes that decision? Is that the police chief? Is that a captain? Who makes the determination of who gets the reserved five beds?
Generally, it's going to be made by whoever the on duty, if there's a field commander on duty, and there's a request made that that person should be held in custody, they'll make a call over to the jail and make sure that they occupy one of the jail beds. So there's a coordinated effort between the jail staff and a field commander. And if it's somebody from the multi-agency gang enforcement consortium, they will do that well, but all, as well, but they all coordinate through the career criminal auto theft team sergeant. They're the ones that coordinate with the jail on that.
I'm sorry, if I can interrupt for a second, I have Paco on.
Oh, thank you. So Chief, thanks for working through technical difficulties. My, my question remains the same, basically. We, we've been funding this to deal with the auto theft, you know, crisis we had. That crisis has, you know, essentially come and gone, not based because people aren't stealing cars anymore, but violent shootings have taken over as a priority for the city. So are, are these beds going to be used for those violent shooting, you know, folks versus, you know, auto theft?
Yes, sir, they, they are. I have the list of the people who are in those five beds right now. I'm looking at it right now. I can tell you that they're all violent gang members. We do have one individual who is taking a bed, who is also a bulldog gang member. This individual happens to be the number one most prolific auto thief in the city and county, so he's, he's also wanted on violent charges. So it, it serves dual purpose to use that one bed for that individual, because he, he does create a lot of problems for the Police Department on auto thefts and other types of thefts. Now, we do have an arrangement with the sheriff, that if we do encounter a violent gang member, somebody that we need to keep behind bars, we make a phone call, and they make an extra effort to keep that person behind bars, and not, and not release them based on jail classification or for other COVID reasons. So we do have that, that deal worked out with the sheriff. This particular budget year, I actually requested to double the beds, and instead of just five, the, the double the contract to pay for 10. But unfortunately, the county sheriff does not have the bed space available. And in the new building that, that is going to open in September, it actually adds fewer bed space. But I have recently asked her, throughout the summer, to give us more resources. I, I recently doubled the magic tactical team, which, who works there in the evenings. So now we have seven-day coverage for magic, and I asked her to allow us to have two additional beds for nothing but magic rescues or violent gang members throughout the summer. So I'm hoping that that will also assist us in keeping violent crime.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Those are my questions.
Councilmember Carbasi?
Just to follow up, and I, I actually share my colleagues' concerns on the number of shootings that have occurred in our community. Chief, I don't know if my colleague wants to read this, but you know, we spend $520 a day for these five beds, which, when you look at the city's overall billion-dollar budget, it's, it's very negligible. Do you want to increase the allocation, Councilmember?
If I heard the chief correctly, there's no need, there's no reason to increase it because there's no additional beds available in the county jail. So at this point, until the county sheriff decides to create more space, there's no reason for us to increase the budget allocation.
Is that what you concur with, Chief?
Yes, as I said, I, I tried to actually double the contract this year. It was, I was submitting the budget, and when we reached out to the county sheriff, that was not a possibility, to double the beds and make it 10 beds for twice the money, because there is simply no bed space.
Okay, and, and offering more money wouldn't solve that problem?
It would not at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bretafeld?
Chief, but you also alluded to that there would be bed space available somewhere down the, the road here, in terms of, when, when is that anticipated?
Well, I, I believe as COVID numbers come down, it'll, it'll make the bed space availability a little bit more flexible. Right, as it stands now, some violent inmates are released due to jail classification, being that they cannot be, you cannot put certain gangs together in the same cell area. So sometimes when, when they can bond out, she has the ability to release them based off of that, and also based off COVID numbers. So if she has too many people in jail, and the COVID spread is high, then she has the ability to release those folks. Also, zero dollar, dollar bail has made that problem worse. So if, if we have the ability to put violent offenders behind bars, and keep them there longer, that is going to help us reduce the violent crime in the city.
The question I have, this has always been about making sure that we had five beds available, because the jail was crowded and filled. And I find it hard to understand that it is still that way when they've released inmates from the prisons and the jails. They've had, as you alluded to, the zero bail. It seemed like they were emptying the jails. Is it still overcrowded there, or is it, beds aren't available because they're restricted due to COVID?
My understanding is it's both, councilperson, and it is difficult for me to understand that as well, because coming from Oklahoma, basically, if you arrest somebody, if you don't get out of jail, it's be bound out. But here, the system is a little bit different. As I said before, besides those guaranteed five beds, which are currently filled, if we have a violent gang member who we don't want released, we can, we can call the sheriff's office, and they will make, they will make sure that that individual does not get out for a predetermined amount of time. But ultimately, the sheriff doesn't have, have that discretion, and she can release people based off of COVID numbers, and based off of jail classification and overcrowding.
Okay. And then I have a question, just in general, and maybe a former police chief and current mayor can address it, but why, why are we even paying for beds? I mean, if people commit crimes, they go to jail. And why did the city have to pay to assure that there were beds? I mean, if somebody commits a crime, they're supposed to go to jail, why do we have to pay to ensure that there's a bed for that?
Sure. So a, a bit of history, many, many years ago, the Fresno County Jail was placed under a court order that limited the capacity of their jail at a certain level. And whenever they get to that number, close to that number, depending on jail classifications, they're mandated by federal law to, to release. And so they make the decision based on a matrix that they have as to who gets released based on severity of crime, a number of other factors. And so at that time, there was no way for us to ensure that our most prolific auto thieves, who were stealing, in some cases, multiple cars a day, were being kept into, in jail. We, you'd arrest a suspect for auto theft, they'd get out that night and steal two more cars by morning. And so the agreement was reached at that time by myself and the sheriff to, that we would, if we purchased beds, could I have a certainty that they would stay in bed, in jail? And, and that certainty was given for five beds. And so we've operated under that agreement for many, many years.
Okay. I, I get it, Chief. I mean, mayor.
Yeah, it's not something that, you know, it was, it was desired, but it was necessary. And, and as a result, I will say that it's, you know, our auto theft numbers have plummeted since then, because we know that the vast majority of auto thefts in the city are being committed by a handful of people. And if you can keep those folks in custody, you can reduce your auto theft rate tremendously, and we, and we did.
Yeah, and, and you're right, you should keep people in jail. I'm not sure the city of Fresno should have to pay to do that, but you're absolutely right.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bretafeld. I don't have anybody else punch up. So we had a motion by Councilmember Arias, seconded by Councilmember Carbasi. Roll call?
Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Councilmember Carbasi?
Yes.
Councilmember Arias?
Yes, because the county's mismanagement costs us more money every day.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bretafeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Esparsa?
Aye.
Council President Chavez?
Yes. All right, next up is item 1R, was pulled by Councilmember Arias. Before we hear it, just want to make sure that, let my colleagues know, I know exactly what the issue is we're trying to address here. We've had a number of conversations out here on the dais with regards to our boards and commissions, and I just want to urge my colleagues and ask my colleagues to give us a little bit of time. I had a conversation yesterday with Assistant City Manager Georgianne White. We're working on coming up with a process that I think can address the concerns that the body has. So all I ask is that for this, respectfully, let's just maintain decorum, let's keep it focused, and to the issue. With that, Councilmember Arias, you pulled it?
Councilmember, Council President, I pulled it because I wanted to hear from my colleagues. I haven't, I've heard from the colleagues who are sponsoring it, so I'll turn the table back to them.
Councilmember Carbasi, or Bretafeld, who wants to go first?
No, just, you know, it's a pretty simple bill. I mean, it's a very short bill, but I understand the implications it has. You know, we had a conversation last week about the Measure P Committee, and I think that we had that out here in the open, which was good, and we kind of got some things out. Really, this is just about ensuring there's a process. It doesn't matter what district you're from, every council member is representing, you know, one-seventh of the city. And we have a responsibility to speak up, and we feel like maybe we don't have access to information, so that we can make responsible decisions. This is not personal, this is not meant to be an attack, it's just, I think, we identified kind of a problem with the system and the flow of information, and we'd just like to improve that process. And I think there was a comment made that, you know, if I communicated or been in touch with something, I would have known, but I rely on tray memos right now. If I had minutes to look at, that would have made a difference. I would have been able to say, okay, this is what this committee's doing, I know this is what's happening, and it conflicts with the tray memo, which we were told that, you know, the mayor's going to work with all of us and appointees, and it would help with communication. And so this is really meant to be a reform measure. I think more transparency is not a bad thing, but that's really what this comes down to. It's just making sure every one of us has access to information, so we can make responsible decisions.
Councilmember Bretafeld?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's clear from my perspective, I think from Councilmember Carbasi's perspective, I think perhaps from some of the administration, that this committee system is flawed. I haven't received information that others have received, and I, I think what went, went down last year with the CARES Committee, with the $92 million, $93 million, I think that was a very challenged process. I, I think it was corrupt in some way, and people hate the word when I say it, but I think it was. I think people were awarded money, the subcommittee brought to this council recommendations of where that $93 million should go. We were not aware or told that other people had applied for money, but were told, no, we were just given this, this list of people under the indication that, you know, we're obviously in a crisis, we got to move on this. Other information subsequently came out, like the food bank had made indications they wanted to be involved in distributing food. The food bank that, you know, their sole mission is distributing food, were told, no. Other organizations that wanted to assist, certainly had the capability to assist, were told, no. I didn't know about that. I didn't know anything about the food bank, but a subcommittee of three made decisions for a council of seven, which was fully supported by an inept administration, the last one, not the current one. And I think bad things were done under this premise of subcommittees. And I mean, that's just a fact. Now, I can go into detail, we don't need to, but that's a fact, and that can't be allowed, again. It just can't. And I was uncomfortable with it then, I voted no on several of those items. I asked the city administration here many times, how are you going to account for funding? How are you going to count that what people are saying they're going to do with $90 million? We were awash in millions of dollars. How do you know it's going to be done? There are commit, there are people who got awards to do contact tracing, they have no experience in contact tracing, none, but they got millions and millions of dollars. But I think people have some, some cozy relationships with some of those folks, and I think it's a corrupt process. I don't want that to happen anymore, and I'm trying to deal with that. The best way I know is to subject these committees to Brown Act situations, where it's, it's noticed, the public has a right to know what's going on, and this is in fact their money. This $93 million is the taxpayers' money, and they have no input into this. They don't know what's going on. Hell, I'm elected, I don't know what's going on, because I'm not on that subcommittee. And that just can't be allowed to happen. It's not a transparent process, it wasn't transparent then, there's no real accountability. And again, I can get into the details, we don't need to at this point, but the details are there, and there are more details to come out. And so this is an effort to bring transparency and to bring accountability. I think the council needs to move forward with this, unless there's a better suggestion of how to bring transparency and accountability. Now, as I recall, only two months ago, when we were looking at these subcommittees, Councilmember Carbasi and myself weren't even on these committees, for the most part. They were set with four or five people who were nearly on all of these committees, and I think there was a reason why that took place. And we, of course, spoke up, and then people said, oh, yeah, yeah, we probably should put them on. I, I think these committees are flawed. I think frankly, for the most part, if you have a working committee, that's fine, but I think these committees are flawed. I want information from the dire administration to come to the entire council. I don't need a subcommittee to screen information for me. Don't need it. It's never been done before, it wasn't being done for years and decades before, but all of a sudden, we've got these subcommittees that are making decisions for entire councils. It's, to me, an inappropriate process, and it lacks what we need here. Sunshine, accountability, transparency. So this is an effort to move that forward. With that in mind, unless people have other ideas, I'll make a motion for us, for this to be adopted, unless somebody can come up with a better idea. And so that's where I'm at with it.
Yeah, Councilmember Bretafeld, and you know, if, if, the body will allow me to work with the administration on, on coming up with a process that addresses everything that you just described, and I want to make sure that the public understands the context. You know, myself, I sat on that committee last year, and you're right, I don't think there was anybody that had a template on how to deal with a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic, right, every hundred years. There are not very many people in town that do contact tracing, that do, I think in my district, we had the first drive-through COVID testing model that was implemented later. Oh, I'm sorry, I think it's Councilmember Carbasi that had the first mini, the mini. I had the mass scale one, I think we got 2,000-plus folks that first weekend. But, but to your point, I, I think, you know, and this is the conversations we've had with the administration, I agree with you. I think, you know, now we're in a different space, we should follow the traditional RFP process, and, and, and ask those organizations and groups that are interested to submit those proposals. I, I think there's consensus on that. And, you know, I, you mentioned a couple of things there on organizations that ask to submit proposals. I can tell you that the way the process worked, once we received those proposals, we would actually vet them through the city attorney, our staff that would deem them, whether they were, you know, within the parameters of what we were looking for, whether they were within the legal parameters, and that decision was made. To your point, which I think is what you're really addressing is, what exactly is the role of a subcommittee, right? That's a conversation that we need to have as a body, and, and trying to come up with the process. That's what I'm offering to help with. How do we clarify, is the, is the committee going to be in charge of digesting and asking questions that a council member? that a council member would, that a mayor would, that staff want answered, and then bring those recommendations to the body as a whole so that we all have the same information? Or do we want those subcommittees to hash that information and then bring their version of the recommendation? I think that's a fair question to have.
Well, I appreciate what you're saying, but part of me wonders, do these committees, some of them, do we need those committees? I mean, the mayor can send us information as a body, which we get all the time, tray memos. I'm not sure that it's wise to have three people on a subcommittee making decisions of that magnitude with this kind of seriousness. I think it's fraught with all kinds of potential problems, and it has been. And so, I appreciate you wanting to work at solving the problem, so do I. I think one of the agendas, in terms of possible solutions, is to eradicate some of these committees, that they're not necessary, and that they're potentially problematic, unless they're subject to Brown Act. Because, I mean, we were talking about $93 million that was dispensed and recommended without a lot of input, no competitive bid process. It's flawed, it's major league flawed.
And that's exactly, I think, what the work that I'm proposing will specifically address. How do we ensure that flow of information for the entire body, for the administration, for our staff? And to your point, I mean, the process that we have right now, I think, needs clarification. I'm offering to help with that, if it's agreeable. I'd like to make the motion to continue the item, come back with a process that we can all vet here publicly, have a discussion, and then vote up or down on if that's agreeable.
Yeah, so you're proposing that you will meet with the administration, come up with proposals to bring back to the council how we improve the process, eliminate committees, all of it?
Yeah, I think those options need to be on the table, because I think, and I've been here 10 years, I mean, you know that you were here too before. What we do sometimes is we stack committees on top of committees, and then we end up with the list. We kind of went through that conversation when we ended up placing Councilmember Carbasi on the COVID, you know, CARES Subcommittee, yourself, you're on the budget committee, you're on the homeless committee. I know there were other committees that were offered. It's no secret, I'm not a big fan of committees, I think I like to do the work a little bit more hands-on, but that's my comfort level, that's not my, all my colleagues' comfort level. So that's what I'm proposing, Councilmember Bretafeld, to come back.
I'm amenable to that, absolutely.
So I'll make that motion, will you second it, Councilmember Bretafeld?
I'll second it, sure.
All right. And I don't have anybody else punched up if my colleagues wanted to try and say something. Councilmember Arias?
I have questions, but I'll defer to Councilmember Carbasi since he'll sponsor it, and then I'll ask my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember. No, I actually think you're moving in that direction I was going towards. I think that part of the conversation needs to be Councilmember President, and I think we discussed this as well, what committees are actually intended to do. And, you know, we got here, and there's a pattern of behavior that led us to this point that I think Councilmember Bretafeld has experienced and I've experienced. I'm more interested in solving the problem than a food fight, so I'm going to hold off on that, but I would like to know before you do talk to the administration if the colleagues have any thoughts, because we are out here in the open, in a public process, and it'd be good to have those, their input before you actually meet, so we can come back with a policy that solves the problem.
Councilmember Arias?
Thank you, Council. A couple of points I just want to clarify for folks. I know COVID was a long year for all of us, but there's a couple of important points that I want to clarify for folks. One, the emergency order that this council approved unanimously allowed us to bypass the RFP process. So that was an intentional action this council took in a very public, open meeting. Secondly, the reason the emergency order allowed us to do that was because the regular RFP process in the city takes between six months to a year. When you're in the middle of a pandemic and you have to contract for COVID testing, contract tracing, which by the way, nobody had done in this area, nobody had ever done contract tracing, nobody had ever done COVID testing, the needs were immediate, and the council Subcommittee made recommendations to the full body to approve and publicly debate. So we did the same thing with every other contractor, and every time we discussed a new area of relief, whether it was food relief or homeless shelter housing, the committee took in proposals from anyone who submitted proposals to the administration for assistance. We then discussed and deliberated those proposals as a committee's supposed to do. Committees are meant to deliberate, not to legislate. And then we made recommendations to the full board, to the full council. Secondly, every committee and any action the committee discussed or took have always been available to the rest of the council. Every committee that's listed has a staff member assigned to that committee, and that staff member can communicate with any council member on any request for information they want. For example, there's a budget committee right now. If I have questions on the budget, I reach out to the city manager, to Mike Lemus, or to administration. I'm not on every committee. If I have questions about those areas, I reach out to them, because the Brown Act doesn't apply to professional staff. We can directly get that information from the professional staff. Additionally, the committees have intentionally given guidance and advice to the administration to put out tray memos so the rest of the council can see the information and the items that we're discussing. And I also want to remind folks that every year, when we set the committees, we also debate what committees should go away, what new ones should be created, and who should serve on those committees. That debate was had in January of this year, it was had in the previous January. Each year, we've removed and eliminated some committees. For example, we eliminated the 99 beautification committee, because there was no money to beautify the 99 at that time, there was no interest to continue that work since the new administration had taken on the off-ramp project. So we've had those discussions, we've had them robustly, and the process has always been the same. Councilmembers submit requests to the council president, the council president makes recommendations to the full body, and in a very public way, we discuss who serves on those committees. The questions I have, although your item is short, it has significant implications. The Brown Act is not just about the meetings being posted, it's also about taking public input. It's also about allowing for translation to occur. If any of you have been in the space of managing a council meeting, translation is extremely expensive, and there's cost implications to making sure that there's translation in every committee meeting. There's also staff implications, somebody's going to have to staff those committees to post them with the timely, with the time required. So I'm assuming the city clerk's office has to take on the task, which will also be some staff implications for them. And my last point I'll make is, we have a ton of committees in the city. Let me read off some of them. The Anti-Displacement Task Force, Bicycle Advisory Committee, Central Project Oversight Board, the Central Southeast Specific Plan, the Civil Service Board, the Consolidated Mosquito Batement, the Disability Advisory Committee, the ALM Revitalization Task Force, the Fresno Madera Agency on Agency, EOC, the Flood Control, the Mosquito Batement Control. We even have a committee to identify the poet laureate. We have the City of Fresno Retirement Board, the City of Fresno Employees Retirement Board, plus the Fire and Police Retirement Board, the Council District Implementation Committees, for those of us who have them, the Friends of French Creek, the Historical Preservation Committee, the Housing and Development Committee, the North King's Ground Sustainability Agency, the Planning Commission, Measure P, the Police Reform, the San Joaquin Conservancy, the LoL Committee, the Joint Powers Authority. There are more committees in this city than I've seen anywhere. Both committees are members of the public, committees that have the council, committees by the mayor. If we're going to have a discussion about the Brown Act, making sure there's public input, there's noticing, there's translation, we should do it to all the committees, whether they're by the council committees. We should also do it for administration task force and committees. We should also do it for any committee in which this body has a representative on it. If we want to pursue transparency, let's pursue it uniformly, but it's also taking into account the cost and staffing implications of doing so, because it's not as simple as a one-sentence item. And with that, that's just my comment. There's a lot of committees, if we're going to do this, let's do it across the board, and let's fund it, and let's make sure that people can engage at every single level. And my only question to the council president, when you meet with the administration, is there going to be a Brown Act conversation that you're going to have in the public, and you're going to have, take public input? Or is there going to be a committee of the mayor and the council president?
It's myself and the administration.
Okay, thank you.
And to your point, Councilmember Arias, what you just described is exactly the information and the data that I want to present to the body as a whole, the cost. What does that also include? The logistics, the process, who's responsible, the city clerk, the city attorney, the administration, professional staff? And you know this because you're familiar with the process, we have something, had something similar at Fresno Unified, just because of, you know, the large number of resources that they have. Councilmember Soria, you've been patiently waiting. If you can queue up, Councilmember Soria, Marco?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Perfect. You know, thank you, and I want to thank my colleagues for bringing this issue up, because I do believe that's a critical issue, and that it's something that actually, as a council, we continue, and I don't think it's just for the president and the administration to kind of determine, I get that flow of the information, that's an important piece, but I think as a council, we do have to have this conversation and debate about how are we going to move forward with committees? I, in my humble opinion, agree that we should have more transparency. I feel that as the fifth-largest city, we should actually be professionalizing our committees. We should have standing committees that are full Brown Act, that have the, you know, city clerk taking minutes and being televised. Every other large city, you know, I was doing research with Oakland, with Long Beach, Sacramento, LA, they all have, we're legislative bodies, so they have legislative committees where majority of the work gets done and vetted. And I would even further propose, just kind of like this legislature, that's how they operate, right? They have the standing committees, policy issues, ordinances that, you know, that we would bring, would be assigned to whatever committee, and then that committee, just like, you know, in the legislature and in other cities, gets vetted by those that sit on the committee, and it gets an up or down vote. And if it doesn't get out of the committee, then that's, you know, that's kind of the process. So I think there's an opportunity to really professionalize our council work, and at the same time, make sure that it is transparent, and that now folks won't have to rely on a tray memo, but my colleagues can go on to, you know, watch the televised, you know, standing committee hearings, and have the opportunity to go back and watch even the recordings that happened. So I would recommend that, I think that we have to have a broader discussion, but I am all about, hey, we want to get into this transparency stuff, let's go full on board, and let's do it, let's take the staffing considerations into account so that we do have the appropriate staff, staffing ability to be able to do all that, and the budget, the resources that it's going to take to accomplish, you know, really getting transparent. So I think that that's a conversation that the council has to have, it's not about the administration, because they're an executive branch, we are the legislative branch, and we've got to determine how our policy committees are going to operate moving forward.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that, Councilwoman Soria, and I don't want the impression to be that somehow I'm just going to draft this and own it. I think at the end of the day, we all own this, we're a body, and, you know, we're two equal branches of government. I think you've been here long enough to know too that we develop and work towards policy, but the administration ultimately implements that direction. I think the more we're working together and collaboratively, I think the easier the work gets for everybody. And at the end of the day, when we think of policy, we think of data and numbers, at the end of the day, it's about people, and trying to help the residents of the City of Fresno, I think in that spirit, that should guide the work that, and the conversations that we're about to have. Vice President Esparza, and then followed by Councilmember Maxwell.
Yes, thank you, Council President. So this is a pretty interesting proposal, I think. In taking a look, taking a step back and a look at how legislative bodies operate, the, you know, the Brown Act applies to all local government within California, for good reason. You know, it does not apply to our federal Congress, does not apply to our state legislature, and I think the primary reason there is the sheer size of legislative bodies. And taking a look, again, at the local government, we have much smaller bodies than the legislatures at the state and federal level. And so, with, again, with good reason, we want to make sure that decisions being made are made under the public spotlight, and within the spirit of our local government and the spirit of the Brown Act. You know, I like to think of this pencil that I have as kind of us, as a legislative body, relatively small, but we write legislation with a pencil. You know, the Brown Act sort of cuts it in half, so you have two pieces, and, you know, I think all of us, we do tiptoeing around this building of, you know, I have to stop somebody in conversation, hey, stop right there, I've got two partners, can't chat with you. Or, you know, ignore a call or ignore a text message from somebody, right, so that, you know, we're not violating. So, you know, we make, I think we go through a good deal of effort in order to sort of abide by the law, again, to make sure that these final decisions are being made in the spirit of the law. I think the implications for this proposal, in taking two people or three people and now calling that a legislative body, further dilutes the deliberative process. I mean, these committees are not meant to make final, final decisions, I mean, they're meant as deliberative bodies to make recommendations for the whole council. And, you know, if we take, we've got half a pencil already, and you snap it in half again, well, you can't write for shit with it anymore, can you? And I think that, you know, even though the legislation is short, it has far-reaching implications in terms of, you know, if I have an idea, I mean, there's a question, can I speak to one other person on the committee? In a committee of two or a committee of three, you know, talking to one other person constitutes a majority, or even supermajority, of folks on that committee. So I think this has potential to severely complicate policymaking, severely complicate the exchange of ideas within the formal structure of our committees. So I, you know, those are the questions I have and the concerns I have in terms of applying this to such a small, a smaller body than we already are. I think if we're going to do this, I mean, this council needs more members, you know, at least nine, at minimum, in terms of, that way you could talk to one other person on a committee, at minimum. So maybe city attorney could clarify, but those are my thoughts on the implications of this. And, you know, the last thing I'll say, I mean, I know a lot of the, some of the concerns by the authors were already addressed. I mean, I chair two committees already that are subject to the Brown Act, that's the School Liaison Subcommittee, as well as the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, the Public Financing Authority. The diff, I mean, each one does have at least two or three council members on it, but the difference is, is that it's made up of additional members, external stakeholders. So the EIFD, the PFA, we have five members in total, so I can talk to at least one person about what's going on there. There's three council members and two members of the public. On the School Liaison Subcommittee, I believe that's subject to the Brown Act per the legislation that Lee Brand drew up when he created it. And again, there I have a whole lot of options, right, because we have two or three council members, and then on top of that, we have a long list of school board members from across the different districts that overlap the city of Fresno. So, you know, while we do have some committees that are subject already to it, I mean, those are larger bodies that go beyond just the council members. So, you know, I have a lot of questions, and just, while clarification on that point, will this really make us a more effective legislative body? I have my doubts. You know, Councilmember Bretafeld, I think you, you know, you referred to the patterns of behavior, you know, and I think we've seen some of that on display, not necessarily from you as much as you're a co-sponsor. And I certainly won't say this or break it down in terms of party, because it's way different, and we have way different and we have more than two here, maybe three or even four different factions and partnerships and alliances, but, you know, governing and politics is different when you're in the minority. And I think that this conversation is a reflection of that. So, you know, happy to hear from you folks, happy to get clarification from City Attorney on, if anything I said is factually incorrect.
As far as legally correct, I don't recall you saying anything that was wrong.
Thank you for clarifying, yeah. It, it was an assumption, just, you know, if we're going to be public about everything and you can't, it also be three people or two people talking as a committee, then that means you are literally not allowed to share your ideas with more than one person.
Right, well, anytime three council members would discuss any topic of city business, they cannot discuss that with any other council member outside of a notice public meeting, if that's what you're talking about.
Correct, but I mean, if, if, if we now reduce the size from seven to three members of a committee and we apply the Brown Act just to that, that body there, we've got the broken pencil, right? You're sort of isolated, you know? If I want to make, if I want to talk to one other colleague and make a decision sort of beforehand about what's going to happen on the committee, that I believe would violate.
Well, the Brown Act would say that if three members of the council are meeting, whether it's a Brown Act committee or a non-Brown Act committee, the same rules still apply, none of them can discuss that topic with any other council member outside a notice council meeting, whether or not that the group of three was subject to the Brown Act. I mean, for, in other words, had an open and a public meeting.
Sure, sure, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President, and I 100% appreciate it, the very interactive pencil-snapping exercise that you had. Councilmember Maxwell?
Thank you, Council President, to my colleagues who brought forward the item. I suppose I disagree with Councilmember Bretifeld. I think the subcommittees do give an added value to the deliberative process that happens on the dais, and it's a large amount of information that we have to digest, usually in less than a week. I want to reiterate for the public that there is no formal vote that takes place in a subcommittee process. We sometimes come up with recommendations, and those recommendations sometimes go to the city council for consideration and are free to vote it up or to vote it down. But I do agree with both of you, Councilmember Bretifeld and Karbasi, that this process could be made better. My major concern with this, there's language that we would have to notice these meetings 72 hours in advance. I wanted to speak as to the fundamental nature of our council meetings. A lot of the times, we don't have the information that we need until the Friday before the Thursday council meeting. A lot of us, I think, read through the agendas over the weekend, and if somebody from that subcommittee had an issue with an item, we would notice it on a Monday, and maybe in time, we would be able to have a subcommittee meeting on a Wednesday, the day before a council meeting. I don't know if this was considered. I hope you will consider it, as you discussed with the Administration Council President, that while I do think we could do certain things to improve our committee process, whether that is whatever information is provided to the committee by the administration, could also be made available to the other council members, so they're privy to that information. I'm fine with that. I imagine you might become inundated with a lot of that information, but some of the provisions in here, I think, are just fundamentally flawed when you take into consideration just the way that we operate here on the city council. We usually have six days to read through the agenda and come up with some sort of idea what we want to do. Subcommittees, a lot of the times, could help us break down that information and figure out what we want to recommend, and I, I just feel like the language in here would prevent us from making the best decisions possible and would essentially nullify the purpose of a subcommittee to begin with, making it essentially toothless and just dead weight for the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maxwell. Councilmember Karbasi, you had some closing talks?
Yeah, so, I'm glad we're having this conversation, and it'll help our council president when tries to negotiate a policy. Regarding Councilmember Maxwell, I think we agree, there's a lot of information. We've had this conversation. I think part of the reason why we're meeting today is because we want to take the time to read everything, and we split the last meeting. And I really do appreciate what you said. I'm always open to considering feedback because a policy can't be what I want or just what you want, it has to be what we all as a body want in a majority. So I do appreciate that. I, I think that when a recommendation comes from a committee, whether it's the committees I serve on or the committees you serve on, I think all the recommendations should probably come to council, but that could be part of the conversation we have. And it's really a conversation of how we envision our committees functioning. But to Councilmember Soria, I also really appreciate your comments because you're being really open to the conversation, and that really does say a lot. I'd like a little more clarification. Councilmember Esparza, you made a comment to Gary and then me about chain of events. Can you clarify, because I got a little confused who you were talking to on that one? Talking about minority, that whole thing?
Yeah, you know, I mean, I think, you know, there's different values among different council members, and that's a reflection of the districts we represent, you know? And again, like I said, I wouldn't break it down by political party, but, you know, I, I think there certainly is, there are factions and caucuses and alliances, and it lines up different depending on the issue. But again, you know, I'll say it again, I think governing and politics in any legislative body is just different when you're in the minority of opinion on many different issues.
So I think, just to clarify, with the first part of your comments, I think you're correct in philosophically how we should operate. The issue is how we're actually operating, and I appreciate your comments on the Brown Act, and I think, from what I've heard, maybe we need a little workshop on that. I wish everyone took the Brown Act as seriously as you presented it. But it's there for a reason. It was created for a reason to ensure that local bodies are transparent and that the people have an equal say at the table. But I mean, I understand the idea of you don't want to take teeth out of everything, but, yep, you're right, it's, it's, it's different when you are governing from a minority, but it's one thing to differ philosophically, it's another thing to not follow the process. And in my opinion, what I felt is, basically, there are things that are legal, but it doesn't make them right. This is the bar, but I think it's up to us to be above that bar. And I talked about a pattern of events, and Councilmember Arias really is tempting me, but I'm trying to hold off on, on, on talking about that. But I think, you know, when you ask for data or clarification, and you know you're out here just asking for common courtesy, and it's almost as if it's all predetermined, I think that raises a lot of red flags, and that's where it kind of causes us to say, well, what's really going on here? But, you know, we can disagree on policy, but I know there's something that you and I can work on, I know there's something that Councilmember Chavez and I can work on, Councilmember Soria, even Councilmember Arias, and we've done it before. But if we start going too far and disrespecting this process, that bridge being burned, then we are doing a disservice to the people, and that's what I see happening fundamentally, the trust isn't here. So Councilmember, Council President Chavez is going to be working with the administration, and I get the joke, Councilmember Arias, but the fact is, I trust him to do that, and that trust makes a big difference. And unfortunately, that's not what we have here. There have been cases where things have been kept from council members, and, you know, you know, you mentioned all those committees. Well, almost all those committees you mentioned are already subject to the Brown Act, and yeah, it costs money, but we didn't hesitate to spend more money increasing budgets for our staff, we didn't hesitate trying to get more office space, this is the cost of doing business. I think it's a good expense when you're spending money to encourage public transparency and translation services. I, I don't, it's just interesting, now we're talking about budgeting and how we shouldn't spend money, but we didn't do that when it wasn't about the other item. And you mentioned the Measure P Committee as a Brown Act Committee, that's kind of why we're here, and some of us were a little concerned about, at the very least, not being kept in the loop. Sorry, guys, but it's a concern. We all have a right to be able to participate in the process, and when you circumvent people because you don't like them or they ask questions, they don't do what you want, it's a terrible thing to use a position of authority and power to punish the people you don't like. And that's not something I ever want to do, it's something I ever would do, and I hope we have the common courtesy never to do that. The argument about bringing the mayor's office into this whole thing and the admin committees, I think Councilmember Soria said it best, that's a red herring. I get the political rope-a-dope there, the problem isn't with the mayor's office. You even complimented them earlier today, Councilmember Arias, they're not being the problem. The problem's the lack of trust in this body. The problem is, you know, we, we've done some pretty good things today, but we're going to spend more time talking about this issue when fundamentally, we should have already had this taken care of. So I really hope, and I'm open, I hope we can solve the problem. It doesn't have to always be the answer I have, I'm open to being part of the process, but when you shut people out of the process because they ask questions, that's not a good thing.
So Councilmember Vaymay, I'm still trying to understand the problem you're trying to solve. You've referenced the Measure P Committee a couple of times. The Measure P Committee was created by this whole body in January when we all voted for the committees. The Measure P Committee made recommendations to the administration, which they have the freedom to accept or deny, and then they make the recommendation to the full body. At no time has any committee, to my knowledge, kept information from any council member. So the council members are free to contact the staff members that staff those committees and ask for information. So if, if you're, what, what I'm struggling with is, the two members who have chosen not to serve on committees are now trying to modify the operations of the committees. And if, if the issue is trust amongst ourselves, then we can probably get through that through a lunch or coffee versus a legislative bill that reforms committees for the majority of the council who's chosen to serve on them. I'm, I'm trying to figure out how...
I, I, I know the answer.
I know, my suggestion to the mayor's committees is not an advocacy that all his advisory committees be Brown Act. What I'm trying to suggest is, this is a broader conversation. There's a series of committees that take place in the city to help the work move forward. So we're going to look at it, let's look at it holistically, let's address the budget and staffing issues, let's address translation, let's address the whole thing. But if, if the reason for this item is that you feel that the Measure P Committee didn't ask you for input on recommended, on names to recommend, that's a Brown Act limitation. It's not to diss you as an individual, it's because we're not allowed to talk to four council members on any business of a committee. So it's not intentional, it's how the process has to be followed. If we convert these committees to Brown Act, we'll have the same limitation. We won't be able to talk amongst more than three people on any matters discussed at the committee, which ultimately are simply recommendations to the full body, where we get to debate, we get to table items, we get to ask for more time. So I, I just want to be very conscious of, there was nothing intentionally done to keep information from the rest of the council. That information is available anytime the council members request it from the administration.
Councilmember Arias, hold on.
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
I think I can, I think I can land this plane. So, Councilmember Arias, and I'm going to give you an example, as I'm listening to Councilmember Karbasi and I'm listening to yourself, and this, I think, will just paint the picture probably clearer than that crystal-clear water bottle. I got off the COVID Care Subcommittee, I got off the Homeless Committee, and I can tell you that I don't know what's going on in those committees. I don't know the data points, I don't know the conversations that are being held with the county. I don't know what the county is providing, I don't know what proposals are coming to the city council, I don't know what H. Speeth is working on, I don't know what the county is working on. What I think we're trying to solve is, how do we get that information to the entire council so that we can all have that same data point, the same information, so that we can all have a comfort level on making those decisions? That's where I think I'm hearing from, from, from my colleagues on that. Councilmember Karbasi, if you want to close this off, and then we'll, oh, Councilmember Bretifeld right after.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. So, and I appreciate your comments, that actually addressed quite a few things. Councilmember Arias, you said things about, you know, it wasn't intentional. It's amazing how many things in this last year have been unintentional. This is not personal. I have to do my job the same way any council member has to do their job, we are all elected. I don't expect to be a dictator and say I matter more than anyone else, we all matter the same, but things have changed. It's getting better now, but things have changed, and there's remnants of what we experienced last year that frankly is very frustrating. You mentioned that the committees have never kept information from the council. I'm going to hold off, but that's just not true. That is simply not true. And if you want to have a conversation over coffee, I'm happy to do that, but I find the only way to hold certain people accountable is to do it out in public, and that's why we're having, we have the Brown Act, and that's why we have this process here. This didn't just happen overnight. This has been a process, this has been a deterioration of local government that's happened over a long time. And how we treat each other does make a difference. We're not perfect, but we, it's going to sound corny, we really should be open to each other and inspire each other and do better, and understand, we make mistakes, but when you try to constantly create an environment that isn't constructive, I think that hurts a deliberative, a deliberative body. And let's not distract from the main issue. Councilmember Chavez said what this is all about. What the problem we're trying to solve? Clearly, better flow of information so we can all make decisions. The Measure P Committee, we talked about that a lot last week, whether it was intentional or not, the administration was led to believe that that was the council's opinion, and they went and reached out to Councilmember Chavez because there was no District Five person on there. So that wasn't the case. So I think that if we solve the problem by saying any committee decision comes to the council for a vote because we're the policymaking body, that would solve that problem so it wouldn't happen again. We are trying to solve an overall problem for a better flow of information so every council member has an equal right to fulfill their oath. That's really what it comes down to.
Councilmember Bretifeld?
Yeah. I'm going to try to land this, and I am a pilot unlike you, Council President Chavez, so maybe I can land it a little better.
Thank you.
First of all, mentioning of the Brown Act from Nelson, having the Brown Act meetings doesn't add anything more of a burden for Brown Act violations than not having it. As, as our city attorney was saying, I mean, the Brown Act applies regardless of those meetings. So it, it's always in place. The Brown Act request that we're putting in for this is to open it up to the public to have more transparency so the public is involved. Whether or not we do that, we'll see, but that, that's the goal of it, not to create more of a burden. It was said that, alluded to, we chose not to serve on committees, that, I never not chose not to serve on committees, when these committees came before us in February, again, those had all been decided, and Councilmember Karbasi and Bretifeld were not on most of those committees. And so we raised the issue, hey, we're not on these committees and we want to be involved. So, yeah, there is a difference when you are in the minority. We are in the minority, I certainly am in the minority here, and I get treated accordingly. We had a vote that took place on the presidency, that went according to, and that's fine, that's, that's democracy, that's the way it works, live with it. But I'm more concerned about transparency. That concerns me. That concerns me when I don't get information and four or five people have information that I don't have, that troubles me a great deal, that matters to me. And that's what this is about. And, you know, I gave the example, you know, we had the food bank that had made a request to participate in something that's critical to our city, and they were told, no. By how many people, the council? No. By the mayor? No. By perhaps one, maybe two, or maybe one person. That's unacceptable. And that took place, that's, that's a fact, that just took place. So we just cannot allow this anymore. I understand, no matter what we do, you can't legislate truly ethical or moral behavior, you're either going to act in an unethical and moral way or you're not. This is not an effort to do that, this is an effort to open up to the public what it has lacked in transparency and accountability. That's what this is all about. So hopefully, I have faith in the council president, that they're going to work well with the administration, we're going to come forward, I look forward to the recommendations, but the bottom line for me is it's got to be in a result that increases transparency and accountability, that's what's, and for me, we ought to look at maybe letting go of some of these committees and just getting a direct dialogue, all of us, between the administration and our, and council members, something that lacked with the last administration in an egregious fashion.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Bretifeld, and I want to thank my colleagues for, for that trust of, of creating, as our former mayor said, hundreds and hundreds of hours of, of work on this. I, I think, I really, I feel very comfortable that we're going to get to a process where we're going to address everything that was discussed today. I am committing to that, we're going to make sure that we do have that flow of information and that council members feel like they have, you know, their comfort level with regards to making decisions. These are not easy decisions, they are oftentimes under, you know, a microscope, and so I, I understand that. You all know that I have a tremendous amount of respect for this body, for the council as a whole, for the institution, the mayor, professional staff, and I think that should be our guiding factor as we work. And I think that should be our guiding factor as we work through this conversation, because I just want to say last thing is, it's about policy, it's about data and numbers, but at the end of the day, it's about people. It's about all the people that we're trying to help in the city of Fresno as we're trying to come out of a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic. Anything we can do to make sure that that information flows in the right direction and everybody has it, I think will make, will make better outcomes for those residents.
And I look forward to meeting with Nelson to explain to me the pencil demonstration because I didn't quite get...
And the pencil breaking exercise. That has to go down in the history books. So, motion was made to continue it by myself, seconded by Councilmember Bretifield. Roll call?
Councilmember, or Council President, do you have a date that it's continued to?
Not yet.
Indefinite.
No, we don't want indefinite.
It will not be indefinite.
A year.
I can assure you, I do not want this... No date yet, Brianna.
Thank you.
Is it fair to assume it'll come back in about a month?
Yes.
Okay.
Council President, before we vote, thank you for keeping us together.
Before my birthday.
Hey, Council President, I did want the... I think there was some confusion on my point, the pencil breaking. I think we're all kind of interpreting it different ways. And I wanted the city attorney to kind of just put, you know, if he could clearly interpret it for us. So, what I... My question is, right, so instead of phrasing it in terms of a comment or analogy, just the question is, if you have a committee of three members, or two members, you know, we apply the Brown Act to that, to that body of two or three, that means that, you know, I could not, if I have a member, I could not, if I went to sort of have a discussion about a policy proposal beforehand, before the committee meeting with one member, that would constitute a majority or a supermajority?
Yes, so a quorum of the committee would be two people. So, if two people on a committee would discuss that committee's business, that would be subject to this ordinance.
And so, you know, me and one committee member having a conversation in my office would be us violating the Brown Act.
If it was a topic of the committee, yes.
So, Council Vice President, in essence, right now the limit is three of us can communicate? The limit would then be reduced to two members? Because two members would be an automatic violation of the Brown Act.
Yeah, I think we all understand that, colleagues.
No, no, no. You could have two members on a committee, but whether it's two or whether it's three, you can't, you couldn't discuss the committee business outside of the committee meeting. So, if you have two members, I mean, that actually, I mean, that makes it 100% instead of two-thirds, right, if you were to talk?
But what we're forgetting, Mr. Vice President, is in the end, all those discussions come to the council where we as a body, as equals, can actually discuss the item, compromise, hash it out in front of the people, and that's the transparency. I get what you're saying.
We're all saying the same thing. I don't think there's any confusion on what you're describing, Vice President, and I don't think there's any confusion on what my colleague is, so.
Council President, before the vote, I do want to defend the previous administration. I know there, it's always easy to take a shot when they're at home, you know, on the couch.
I think I took shots when they were sitting right here and I looked right at them. It's not taking a shot at anybody who's not here.
I know.
I took a shot when they were right here. Don't make that accusation out of it.
I get that, Gary. I get that. What I'm trying to articulate is, the previous administration worked with the council to get through a significant pandemic, and not one of the contracts that the council awarded has not met its targets. Most of them have actually exceeded the targets that they were contracted for. So, even though we didn't go through an RFP process, not one of the contracts failed or they weren't, you know, executed as awarded by this council. So, there is some kudos to the previous administration for helping us work through that process, because folks did receive relief. They did get COVID testing. You know, we just had UC San Francisco, we contracted for 10,000 tests, they did 26,000.
I'm sure our former Republican mayor will thank you very much for those public...
Mr. President, I just want to say one thing. First of all, nobody accuses me of not saying what I have to say right to someone's face. So, I said it many times to Mayor Brand's face as well as administration. To act like that was a transparent administration that took place, they worked with certain members, of course with you, Mr. Arias. They did not work with me and many others. So, there's a lot of blame and there's a lot of looking at what went down. And we don't know yet that what you said is true. We don't know yet. I've requested to find out, did the organizations that got that money, did they meet their goals? We don't know. You don't know. I haven't seen any documentation from it. I've asked Mr. Lehman to show us the documentation. That's coming to us in a couple of weeks. So, it is to be determined whether or not all of the millions of dollars that were spent was actually utilized appropriately, which organizations did it well, which didn't. So, you're making statements that we really don't know. I mean, unless you, again, have more information than I do.
Mr. President.
Now, Councilmember Bretifield, you're exactly describing the problem we're trying to fix. I can tell you, sitting on the previous COVID Care Subcommittee, there were reports that came to the committee with regards to outcomes, goals met, goals not met, too. And I can tell you, there'll be plenty of time to scrutinize those agreements.
I'd like to see that information that you have.
Exactly, exactly the point that you're making. That flow of information needs to happen. With that, Brianna, roll call?
Council President, last comment.
Oh, my God.
Non-controversial. No one's going to want to fight me on this one. So, I mean, I think, I think we sent the last administration home pretty bruised up, right? Everyone from Gary to Miguel to in-between took a shot. You know, but in terms of the broader, the broader conversation that we're having here, I mean, this administration has done, I think, a substantially better job in that communication. So, I think the infrastructure is there for that flow of information, you know. And I'll say so far, right? So far, it's been great over these last several months. So, kudos to them, and I think we're, because of that infrastructure we have with that flow, I think we will come to a resolution.
Mr. President, one last thing.
I am going to, I am going to say a prayer of patience right now. The Lord, please help me.
I will say, Mr. President, you've done a good job and you've earned that extra money you get for being president. I have to clarify. My colleague made a statement. I don't think that we actually have ensured that all the vendors and contractors through COVID, that we rectified all those. There are some questions, I think, that we have, and I feel bad for Lee because he just wanted to go back in the private sector, and the poor guy is still being roped in. But I think there are questions that still have to be answered on that. And, you know, maybe what we could do is submit Brown Act to any committees that deal with significant amounts of money at the very least. I think that's a big concern. But, you know, with that, I think we're all kind of rowing in the same direction now. Is that right, Council President?
Yes. So, City Clerk, mute all the microphones and let's go to roll call, please.
You have control of the microphones. Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Councilmember Carbasi?
Yes.
Councilmember Arias?
Yes, for Gary.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bretifield?
Yes.
Vice President Esparza?
Aye.
And President Chavez?
Thank you, Lord, yes. Item number five is 1S, and it was pulled by Councilmember Bretifield. This is the Measure P?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I met with the people representing my area. They're fantastic folks and happy to support this. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion made by Councilmember Bretifield, seconded by Councilmember Maxwell. Roll call?
Councilmember Soria? Councilmember Carbasi?
Yes.
Councilmember Arias?
Yes.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bretifield?
Yes.
Vice President Esparza?
Aye.
President Chavez?
Yes. All right, our last contestant item is item 1U, and I believe it was pulled by Councilmember Maxwell.
Yep. Thank you, Council President. Do we have Mr. Vargas queued up or whoever will be speaking on behalf of...
Mr. Barr.
Yes, Brian. Brian Barr is up.
Barr.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Barr. Thank you for taking some time to address some of my concerns this morning. A series of questions. The first, if you could just explain, you know, for the public's edification, the exit clause that is involved with this, as well as what are the implications if any of us exiting from this contract early?
We can terminate this contract for any reason for convenience, period end. So, it's as simple as that. If we go towards free fares, we can cancel the contract and have no more maintenance services of the fare collection system.
Thank you, sir. This is a proposed 2.2 million dollar allocation that, proposal that's before us today is for a one-year contract, but we could extend that four additional years, and that's included in that 2.2 million estimate. Is that correct?
The 2.2 million is over five years, and it's a one-year base contract with four one-year extensions, and the authority, if approved by council today, would allow us to authorize those extensions.
So, we know currently that we, you know, we have suspended bus fares. There aren't currently folks paying fare to ride one of our city buses, which means that they're not engaging with the TVMs, the ticket vending machines, or the onboard fare boxes. I know that the proposal before us would allow this contractor, it allows them to work on these machines six days a week. So, I suppose my question is, in a time when we're not really utilizing these machines, what is the urgency right now to have these folks maintaining these machines that are getting very little use, six days out of seven days?
Well, first of all, you should know that this contractor is already working on these machines as it stands right now. They've been working on the ticket vending machines since 2018 and our fare boxes since 2013 when the original contract was let. Now, it's, you're right. This equipment is sitting unused because we're not collecting fares. However, we still have to maintain them in state-of-the-art repair. Now, you're probably thinking, well, again, they're not being used. Just the sheer fact that they're sitting in an environment with lots of dust, you know, ticket vending machines out on Blackstone, dust from the street, et cetera, going into the ventilation system and the electronics requires them to be cleaned. Each ticket vending machine has to be PMed every 60 days. So, really, there's one TM on Blackstone or Kings Canyon that's being PMed every day. Now, for our fare boxes and our buses, same applies. You have the environment, dirt, the debris, the et cetera, that go into those electronics, those mechanisms, which are highly sensitive. They have to be cleaned, they have to be adjusted, they have to be calibrated, so that way, if we go back to fares in September, they can be relied upon and we're not having to replace equipment and spending a lot more money just trying to figure out why parts failed.
I appreciate that. Can you clarify for me, how the financing of this would work? Would we pay the 2.2 upfront? And if so, and at a later date, you know, as you mentioned, we go full zero fare, would we just be prorated whatever amount was not used for the additional, hypothetically, four and a half years, four years, et cetera?
Well, the way that this would work is we pay on a monthly basis. So, I think it's about $37,500, $450,000 a year, paid on a monthly basis. So, we pay for what we get. Pay for what we use, I should say.
So, we would be prorated whatever was not used for those services if we go zero fare? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, so, you know, at the, let's say at the end of May, we owe them 37,500, pay that. Next month, 37,500, pay that. And if we cancel the contract in, you know, July 1st, that's all we pay. That's it. They walk away and that's it.
Gotcha. Is there any penalty to cancel the contract at any point? So, if we do end up going permanent zero fare in the next three to six months, is there any penalty where we, when we abruptly stop paying?
No, there's no penalties. We spent a lot of time negotiating this contract, about two and a half, three months, and full support, the city attorney's office, to get us to a point where we could cancel without penalty for any reason whatsoever, just in the sheer fact of canceling or terminating the contract on convenience.
Well, it sounds like you folks have done a wonderful job of that. So, what I'm hearing is that, is this, I mean, virtually zero risk? I mean, is that accurate or are there any risks that you potentially foresee?
We just owe the contractor a 60 days' notice cancellation. That is in the contract. But in those 60 days, you know, if we go free fares, it would probably be, okay, well, let's remove the equipment and get rid of them, or whatever we choose to do or are told to do with the equipment. But otherwise, no risk, zero.
I have a broader question for administration. We've had some conversations recently about the implications of going zero fare and, you know, potentially having to pay back the fed city manager if we don't utilize the ticket vending machines for their intended lifetime, which is about 10 years. This is a five-year contract. Is there any credence to the notion that this is a more financially sound decision to use this federal money to maintain these machines over the next five years instead of paying back the federal government, that number that was proposed to the Subcommittee that we would have to pay back to the feds for the ticket vending machines if we went zero fare?
So, let me answer that one. This is funded by 5307 federal money. So, even if this contract didn't exist, that money was available, we couldn't use federal money to pay back federal money.
You said we could not?
Could not.
So, I guess my only concern is that, you know, depending on, you know, how and when and how long it takes us to reach a zero fare model, would be expending the 2.2 million dollars and then on top of that, having to expend another, you know, six, seven, eight million dollars to, you know, meet the terms of our contract with the federal government for those ticket vending machines? That's a concern I have.
Yeah, so, like, just to clarify, you're just encumbering the money today. You're not spending it today. You're just encumbering it, and you're going to pay as you go on a month. So, say we do 2 million, the 2.2 million dollars, Brian says we cancel after 60 days' notice. All that money we didn't spend, we just unencumber it and put it back into the operation of the fact. So, we're not double counting the money. It doesn't cost us twice.
I understand that wouldn't cost us twice, but if we were to, let's say in two years we go zero fare, right? We will have spent part of this 2.2 million dollars, and then on top of that, we will have to pay the full amount back to the federal government still. I think you estimated, you know, four to eight million dollars for that. So, I wanted to bring that up. That's a concern. You know, we're spending 2 million dollars potentially over several years, and then at the end of that, let's say we're late to the game, we go zero fare several years from now, we would still have to pay that additional several million dollars to the federal government.
Yeah, it's not an unusual request of the federal government that if they're going to give you money to build a facility, whether it's a water plant, HVAC for a building, bus stuff, you got to maintain it. So, our commitment is to maintain it. This is our demonstration that we're going to maintain it. And then if we determine that we don't want to maintain it because we want to go to zero fare after six months, 18 months, whenever, we unencumber the money, and then we initiate that process of working with the federal government on how do we repay you for these machines that we no longer are going to be using.
So, this five-year contract city manager will take a lot of these ticket vending machines to the end of their lifetime, to the end of the 10 years, roughly, to when they were installed. And so, is this a viable alternative approach to paying back the federal government? If we use these federal findings to keep these ticket vending machines maintained, do we keep them around till the end of their lifetime and we could still go zero fare if we're maintaining these ticket vending machines instead of paying back that federal money? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. And Brian, I'll have to look for you to kind of chime in on this, but your thought is that if we continue to maintain them, can we use that as a basis for telling the federal government, "Hey, look, we still got them. We're maintaining them. Don't penalize us. Don't make us pay them back." And I think, I think what the city attorney's office and Brian Barr's team has determined is that if you don't use them, you got to pay them back. It's all about using them. It's all about using them.
But we're not using them now, correct?
Well, yeah, but we're in this, everything's kind of suspended right now with FTA just because we're in this COVID space, but eventually it'll come back and like.
Has there been like an ordinance or something that put a moratorium on that provision? Because we're not using it and we don't have to pay it back. So is that, is there a sunset on that?
The FTA is very clear in their guidance that we can suspend fares up to six months. Period end, no longer until a fair equity analysis confirms that we could go free fare and of course the finances. But that six months is our grace period, which we are in right now.
Mr. Barr, has the initiation of that analysis been conducted?
You know, we are working on that right now. We can go into further details in our transportation subcommittee meeting coming up in the future.
All right. My last question for you, Mr. Barr, and I appreciate again the time that you've taken to address these.
Sure.
If you could just be as detailed as possible as to what kind of services or resources this FTA 5307 grant funding can be used for?
5307 primarily funds our maintenance activities. So it's anything from wrenching on a bus to buying parts to maintaining our bus stops and associated passenger amenities and of course fare collection system. Anything that requires maintenance and what we spend on.
So maintenance, pretty much?
Hmm.
Gotcha. I'll hand it over to any of my colleagues if they have questions, but I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion was made by Councilmember Maxwell, seconded by Vice President Asparza. I don't see anybody punched up. Oh, Councilmember Bradfield?
Okay, so we're going to enter into a contract for five years, maintain this fare collection system for five years, but we're intending at this juncture not to collect fares.
Correct. In this moment right now, we are in, we are not collecting fares, but we're still maintaining the equipment.
Right. So I'm, I don't know, I'm a little perplexed as to whether or not to support this because the fare collection system is comprised of 118 fare boxes, 55 ticket vending machines, two cash vaults, various fast fare E devices. You have five gen fare employees that will provide maintenance service six days a week, Sunday through Friday, but we're not collecting fares.
Right. And as Mr. Barr said, that the federal government across the country has said, we're going to allow you people, public transit agents, to suspend fare collection for an interim period. And after that, we have to make a decision here as to how we want to go forward.
So what is the, what's the administration's position on the zero fare? I mean, I think you alluded to you're going to look at this after a certain period of time and then come back.
Yeah, so we've done the preliminary analysis. We've made, we've provided some preliminary information to the subcommittee. Next week, we're going to give them our final findings and recommendations. Again, we'll give that to all of the council members on what we believe is a path forward for zero fare. Part of it is just how do you compensate for that fare box revenue that we, that we'll be forfeiting? We're just, we're not going to use that. So how can we backfill that with either Measure C, private donations, sponsorship? Is it possible to make up that number and still do the level of service that we're providing right now? Or do we have to maybe consider adjusting service to match the level of funding that's available? So that's the process we're in right now. We've identified the numbers. We'll go through the committee next Tuesday. I think it's the fourth, we're meeting with them again. We'll get all the information, all the council members, so they see the findings that we will present to the group.
Have you reached conclusions already?
We've got the data. It's just a matter of, it's a question of how confident are we that we can sign up several million dollars of subscribers to backfill the fare box? That's the confidence question for all of us, because that's what we'll have to do. We'll have to backfill the fare box revenue with sponsorships or donations to cover what we no longer will be recovering.
Need people to donate to the city for those fare?
Big employers that we might have, the big concentration centers for transportation, the hospitals, the clinics, those kinds of places, the big employment centers. Can we, are people in those areas, the school systems, the university system, are they, do they have the interest and the capacity to fund the program for free fares, which would essentially subsidize everyone else around the city so that we could have that program? That's the process we've got to go through. How confident are we can capture that kind of revenue?
And you're going to bring that to us in three months?
No, no, we're going to bring, we're going to bring findings, recommendations next Tuesday.
Okay.
And then that, we can still go ahead and do the suspended fares, as Mr. Brian said, for six months. So I think that takes us to September. So I'll give us a chance to kind of test it some more. What does the capacity look like? What's the maintenance change on the buses? Because theoretically, if we move forward with this, we got a good window here to test it, there'll be a change in the service delivery that we have on, that we're providing on the buses. There'll just be more people, just more maintenance that we'll have on the buses. How does that look? And then we can come back and make the decision with everyone. Here's really the numbers, but we're going to give you a findings, recommendations next Tuesday.
Okay. And if this zero fare cannot be sustained, then we would initiate the fares and we would keep.
Well, I think that's a policy question for the council. Your options are to adjust the level of service with the bus, with the transportation system based on the level of funding you think you can secure from the community. So we could calibrate it to that. We could, as you indicate, just let's go ahead and continue with the fare program that we have now, or somehow adjust the level of service to match the funding we have available. And so that might mean shrinking the system a little bit. I don't want to say a little bit. We're going to, shrinking the system.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. I don't see anybody else punched up, so motion was made.
I had another question.
Oh, Councilmember Maxwell.
City manager or Mr. Barr, so we're currently allowed by the federal government, we're authorized to suspend the fares for six months and then we have to go, was it the Title VI study that needs to be conducted? Is that what it's called?
It is a fair equity analysis that we have to do to make sure that we are not discriminating or excluding people from.
So Mr. Barr.
Boarding the bus system.
Okay, understood. So let's say we go through that analysis and it has found that by going zero fare, we are not discriminating against a particular group by doing so. Are we then sanctioned by the federal administration to continue not maintaining our ticket vending machines, just like we are now for this six months? Because this six months, as I understand, is sanctioned by the federal government. We could suspend fares, but this process is also a federal process. And so if they sanction us and they allow us to extend beyond those six months, would the same hold true for the maintenance of our ticket vending machines then?
Yeah, we would still be relied, we would still be relied upon by the federal government to maintain this equipment. We've got to formally request to them, hey, we want to walk away from these. Will you authorize that? And then they'll tell us the conditions upon which you can walk away from these vending machines is this, and that's the process we'll have to enter into with them. And we'll just, they'll define for us what will be required to do. We have a preliminary indication, there'll be some payback of some sort, and then they'll dictate to us on the maintenance, you know, that'll probably be up to us at that point, but we won't get federal money to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions by council colleagues? Seeing none, motion was made. Second roll call.
Councilmember Soria. Councilmember Karbasi.
Yes.
Councilmember Arias.
Yes.
Councilmember Maxwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Bradfield.
Yes.
Vice President Asparza.
Aye.
Council President Chavez.
Yes. All right. Let's move on to our 10 a.m. item. This is action pertaining to amendments to the Master Fee Schedule Resolution 80-420. Who do we have from staff that's going to be answering questions on that?
Aaron Aguirre, and I believe he's being promoted.
All right. So with that, council colleagues, did you have any questions?
I do. I'd like to make a motion to table the item, but I do have some questions before.
Well, do you just want to table the item and we don't have to ask the questions? You could ask the questions later.
That's fine, too. Just admin, there's so many redlining changes. It's really hard to follow what's actually been increased and what's been decreased. The way the document's set up, it's, everything's in red, so you really can't tell what are the changes being made. So we just need some more time to figure out. And maybe the next time, the staff can just summarize in the front page of the item, a highlight of which ones are being changed versus, you know, the whole document being in red. It's hard to follow.
Do I have a second to continue the item?
I'll second it, but I did want to ask a couple of questions. I mean, I read the staff report and I mean, it outlines it, but it's not, you know, it's tough to follow all of them. There's a whole, a lot of them. But my questions were with respect to three of the water fees, so specifically the service disconnection, the service restoration, and the after-hours turn-on. You know, I'm, I think we're raising all of these. That's the proposal here. And I'm just concerned with, again, the circumstances that we're in, COVID sort of coming, see light it into the tunnel, it coming to the end, and all of the different housing issues that folks are going to be facing. I wanted to know exactly how much the disconnection, restoration, and after-hours turn-on service, how much those fees are increasing and what the implication is of us either not increasing them or even decreasing them?
Morning, council. It's Mike Carvahal, Department of Public Utilities. And in terms of the service work, these are existing fees that are in place. And I'll remind you that we started this process back before COVID, you know, or actually, I think, no, this is just an annual update where we go through and we look, take a look at the charges and the fees are really based upon the actual cost to send somebody out and send the employee out, their equipment, and perform the service. And so the service work are not fees that are charged at a high level. It's, we typically try to work with the customer in terms of notifying them before their service is shut off and then giving them adequate notice in the event that they are shut off and only in the event that the customer takes action to restore the service themselves. Then we work through a process of installing a padlock. If they remove that, then we may install a blind washer and then worst-case scenario is to go out and physically turn off the service, like dig up the street and shut off the service. So it's pretty rare that we work through that, all the way through that process, but we do have to have fees in order to go out and carry out those activities. The charges are not going up very significantly. In fact, some of these are, you know, less than $5 in terms of the actual increase that's being proposed.
Director, Director Carvahal, though, I would submit to you that on the service restoration, it's going, it's being increased by $300. So I kind of want to be able to have an ability to talk about why that one's so much.
Which fee is going up 300?
The water, there's a service restoration. It's going up by almost 300. It's 785 currently and going up to $1,028.
Yeah, that's the one where I talked about that it's pretty rare and the cost of doing that work includes digging the street up. And so when we finally restore the service, we do have to bring in a paving contractor to put a permanent pavement patch back on the street. And so that's why we see that charge going up by a greater amount than the others.
City manager, some of these fees are increasing by a third, some of the building fees, and it seems a little out of order for us to be increasing fees before we discuss a budget, especially given that we have a housing crisis and we haven't figured out yet how to alleviate some of the housing obstacles that we have in the city. Is there any reason why we have to do this today? Can we do it maybe after we get a glimpse of the budget and how we're going to spend our rescue funds?
Hey, Mike, are you, Mike, you there?
Yes.
The state still has the moratorium on the shut-offs, right?
That's correct. We are not currently shutting.
Yeah, so we're not allowed, but again, I do want to clarify, this is an enterprise fund, so this is not general fund money. This is the money it actually costs within the utility. So if that individual who defeated the system illegally connected.
Yeah, no, no, no.
If we have the cost to do that, we don't want to make everybody pay for that.
No, understood.
We want that individual.
But this item is the master fee schedule for all the fees across the city. So the planning department is increasing some of the fees by a third. So I just want to get us to get a sense of the budget before we start, you know, increasing everybody's fees and have this room full of people screaming at us.
So your proposal would be to make it part of the budget actions that we?
To table it until we get a glimpse of the budget and then we can bring it back as a master fee schedule.
Excuse me. So we generally need to adopt the master fee schedule before we present the budget because the budget is based on what is in the master fee schedule. So this, we've tried to bring this forward, I think, three or four other times, four times. This is the fourth time this has been on the agenda. So we really can't wait because the budget is based on these fees. So we'd be happy to provide an additional cover sheet to summarize what's in the document so it's not as confusing to read. We'd be happy to provide that, you know, immediately. But I understand your point. Do know that we have met with the building industry on all of the fees. Several of them have to, were justified by the NEXUS study that was adopted by this council, I believe, last year and their CPI adjustments that are automatically put into place. So I would encourage you to adopt this as soon as you are comfortable after we provide the summary sheet so we can move forward with the budget numbers.
That's a fair request. So.
But why can't we, why can't we approve them together, though? If it is part of the budget and you guys are gonna craft the budget based on these assumptions, why can't you guys just bring them together?
So theoretically, what I'll tell you is the budget numbers rely on these increased fees. So for instance, if you approve them together and you chose not to approve some of the fee increases, then it would create deficits within certain departments. And then we'd have to go in and redo some of the budget work in a particular department. So in planning and development, for instance, there are cost recovery fees. So we are building a staffing model that is paid for by some of these fee increases. So when we bring forward the budget and let's say we bring it together and you say, yeah, we love the budget, but we don't want to increase fees, we just approved a budget that doesn't have a revenue source to support it. So we could, if you adopt them, if you vote yes on them, but of course, I know you can't say you're going to do that now. So that is generally why we bring the master fee schedule prior to bringing the budget. It's one of the revenue sources for the budget.
So you had mentioned that you obviously consulted with the folks who are going to be impacted, some of the builders. Can I ask the administration, just in terms of my priority, in terms of, I guess, the lowest hanging fruit for building housing, how well represented were sort of multifamily builders or mixed-use development with housing builders? I mean, how well represented were they in these conversations?
Jennifer, are you on? Marco or Brianna? Jennifer Clark is the one. I believe they met with the Building Industry Association, but I'll have her comment as to who exactly are in those meetings.
Sure.
And council, just a friendly reminder, your punch-up buttons are working. If you could just help me out by clicking on those and I can kind of see the queue up here, so we're in order. Thank you.
Jennifer?
Good morning, council. Jennifer Clark, Director of Planning and Development. So I appreciate the questions. There is a lot of red and I apologize, there is a lot of red. The majority of those are text changes. There are only 10 actual fee changes. So there are 15 text changes, eight fee adjustments, five fee deletions, and two new fees related to planning and development, which are our planning fees and our building fees. On the building side, the increases are related to simple permits, which would not be, which would generally be associated with a tenant finish or a standalone kind of permit rather than a large multifamily project. And there are a number of fees that have been reduced. So there's one fee that goes up. I think that's the one that Councilmember Arias is representing. It's going up from $59 to $89. And those are related to our simple mechanical plumbing and electrical permits. And it's based solely on the actual time to conduct, to issue the permit and to conduct the inspections.
Jennifer, while I have you on the line, it looks like the special events permit is also increasing. I can't tell whether it's going from $190 to $560.
So I would refer, so the special events permit is specifically related to a, we have been, the temporary event structure permit.
Correct.
Is considered a new fee. We have been charging this at an hourly rate rather than having the fee shown in the master fee schedule. And this is for, specifically for structures. So if there is a structure that is constructed and it needs to be permitted and inspected per the California Building Code, we are charging that rate based on actual hours to perform the task. Essentially, it's about an hour to do that work.
So I have hesitation concerning the special events permit. In 19, before the pandemic, people were averaging between, you know, $500 and $10,000 of permit fees to be able to host events downtown. We lost a couple of events to Clovis. And part of that conversation that the previous administration was supposed to resolve was there's 10 different people doing inspections and each time they get charged a different bill and nobody completes the inspections. How are we managing inspections for special events? Have we talked to the Downtown Partnership about this fee structure?
Right. So this fee is currently being charged on an hourly rate when there are structures. This is not related to the special event use permit, which is a different use permit. So this is specifically based to building inspections based on the structure.
Correct. So basically, when they set up a stage, which requires a?
A stage or another large structure, because there have been other built structures that have been erected, whether they're entrance or gateways or that kind of thing. So in terms of the overall special event process, that has been under the umbrella, that was previously under the umbrella of the administration. I don't, I can't speak to, for the administration at this time. I know that that was ongoing prior to the pandemic because, but because no special events are being permitted right now, we don't. Um, we don't, um, I have not had any new conversations on that.
Understood, uh, the only request I would make is between now and when this item comes back next meeting, if you can meet with the Downtown Partnership, those are the folks who pull the most special, uh, special events permits. And we touch base on what the cost is gonna be, how the fee's gonna work, those kinda things. As, as reopen the economy, I'm anticipating a lot more events in downtown. And I don't want to learn later that this has become now cost prohibitive. And then my second question is, um, there's changes to the parking fee structure. Um, everything is in red, so I can't tell whether it's going up or down. What, what's the, the recommendation?
Those, um, the parking, um, the parking fees that are identified, those are, um, in conformance with state law. So the fees themselves are not changing. It is specifically related to, um, the definitions within, um, the, within the code. So these are all text changes.
Got it. All right.
And then just to follow up, we've been having discussions with the Downtown Partnership about trying to reopen the mall, reopen everything. And what, what, what would that look like? The street closure, the stages, the vendor inspections? So we've been trying to go through that process about trying to budget those and, and get those in the queue, cause we wanna have events downtown as soon as we can.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah, and council, if I could just make a, a, a request, if you could email the questions, concerns, or anything you might have for the administration. I mean, I think we wanna make sure we get this item addressed and baked into the budget assumptions. Uh, Councilmember Carbasi, wanna close us off?
Sure, real quick, I, I think Councilmember Esparza brought up some good points about, um, our enterprise fund with water. Just to be very clear regarding the fees, I am, you know, on, in March of last year, the council, I think, made the responsible decision of wanting to prevent water shut offs. But unfortunately, the reality is that, uh, you know, we have a lot of people with, that are delinquent and we have to solve that problem. We made the responsible decision, I think now we have to fill that hole. So I'll be bringing an item forward, um, for the council's consideration to do that, but I'm looking for cosponsors, so only two, round act.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that. Motion was made to continue by Councilmember Adias, seconded by Vice President Esparza.
Council President, and just for the record and the city clerk's benefit, it'll be the next meeting, so.
So five, five thirteen?
Yes.
At, at Teddy.
All right.
He, he meant the Transparency Act, right?
Well, I have a, just a quick question.
City clerk? Oh, you do have a question?
Just a question, so does that work for the administration if we bring, for the five, okay?
It's cutting it close before the budget rolls out, but we can make it work. And we'll be sending out, it's a spreadsheet, that's a summary of all these, that show if they're going up or going down. We'll send that out probably today or tomorrow.
And can you document all the outreach that you guys do to council members so we can embarrass them out in the dais and they don't have an excuse on why they didn't get questions answered?
I would never do that.
I could, I could do that, I'm more than happy.
Council President, as long as the administration recognizes that their draft budget is simply a draft.
Roll, roll call, uh, city clerk?
Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Councilmember Carbasi?
Yes.
Councilmember Arias?
Yes.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bretafeld?
Yes.
Vice President Esparza?
Aye.
Council President Chavez?
Yes, all right, uh, city attorney, we have a closed session item that we need to tackle because we have a very expensive lawyer that is going to be waiting for us or is waiting for us, if you could make the announcement?
Yes, we are doing, uh, five C, which is deciding whether to initiate litigation concerning, uh, deck relief action versus Bryant Water Authority. And then we will go to lunch directly after the closed session.
Yeah, we'll go to lunch after and then come back at, uh, one thirty for, uh, two workshops and then the remaining, uh, closed session items.
City Attorney, do we expect the report out?
No.
Yes, this is Zoom.
Yes. Thank you. All right, time is one thirty-four and, uh, we are back in session. We will, we will start where we left off, which is, uh, General Admin and we have item three A, which is a workshop on the Downtown Fresno Partnership Annual Twenty Twenty Report. This is being presented by the City Manager's Office, uh, City Manager Skida?
From the Downtown Partnership online, hopefully we can elevate him? Yay, we've elevated him.
All right.
So he'll start sharing his screen with the presentation to update us on their activities. There you are, Jimmy.
Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
All right, I'm trying to share the screen, but it says it's still disabled, so.
We can hear you loud and clear, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm trying to share my screen, but it says that the host has disabled participant screen sharing.
Brianna, can you allow him to share his screen? Is it a PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you try again?
All right.
There you go.
All right.
All right, you are set, sir.
All right, well, thank you for the time, I know, uh, I know your time's very valuable, so we appreciate this chance to, uh, kinda present what we, uh, accomplished in two thousand twenty, a very unprecedented year for us downtown. Um, I'm also gonna touch a little bit on, uh, uh, where we've been the last three years as I go through this and then also what's coming up this year, what we've already started, where we're heading this year. Um, and if you have questions at the end, I'd be happy to take those, so. Um, also, this whole presentation is on our, uh, uh, website as well, so if anyone wants to access it there later, you're more than welcome to. Um, just a quick look at our twenty twenty Board of Directors and Staff. Um, this board, uh, finished up their term December thirty-first of two thousand twenty. And then for those who don't know, this is the, uh, the map, the zone map of our district, the P-Bid, which goes from Amador down to, um, Ventura and then between the railroad tracks. You'll see three different zone colors, the, uh, the Fulton Zone, which is, uh, uh, the, uh, the Long Fulton from, uh, Twalney down to Inyo. That is the, uh, the highest rate payers. Then, uh, Zone Two, which has kinda been Ness Corridor, is the second highest rate payers. And then Zone Three is the rest of the, the district, um, which has the lowest. And they receive the least amount of services that our organization gives. Um, okay, first up, we'll start with, uh, some business development. Um, because of COVID, we ended up shifting, uh, to focus on business retention for two thousand twenty. We started the year with a lot of big plans for, um, launching our new branding and doing events and all type stuff. And all of it shifted to how do we try to keep our businesses alive in downtown? Um, and not lose ground from where, where we started and what we've accomplished over the years. Um, you'll see, we did have some openings still within the year of two thousand twenty, um, with those brave businesses that, uh, even during the pandemic, decided to open their doors. Uh, we do have some leases pending still, um, that we're waiting to get open. Um, we also still have some projects that are under construction downtown, fifteen of those, uh, which are coming along nicely. They slowed down a little bit to the pandemic, but, uh, uh, they are going. Where it says grand openings, that is grand opening celebrations, which we used to help our businesses with. We haven't really been doing those much since the pandemic, since we haven't been, uh, been doing very many gatherings of people. And then where you see the e-blast to the business, that's our communications that we have with our business community, um, which we really, really stepped up this year to provide them with updates on the changing COVID status of the state, um, what the requirements were for businesses, where assistance was for businesses and how we could connect them with that. Uh, on this page, we, uh, the first thing you see is PPE distribution. We partnered with the Chamber of Commerce to get, uh, a, a number of our businesses, uh, PPE, including masks, um, uh, hand sanitizer, gloves, in order to help them, uh, uh, function during the time, especially when they were having trouble getting that. Um, we did, uh, we launched a new website in two thousand nineteen and we ended up adapting that website in two thousand twenty to really fit the pandemic. We really wanted to focus on who was open, when they were open, who was doing takeout, food, deliveries. Um, so we had a huge shift that way in order, on our website, in order to, uh, uh, let the public know what was happening with our businesses. Um, this, the Create Here Business Plan Competition, this is something that we're in our second year in a row of doing. We had done it once before, I think back in two thousand fifteen it was done. Uh, and we received a Pro Neighborhoods grant, uh, from JP Morgan Chase and Central Valley Community Foundation, uh, back in two thousand nineteen. And we're able to start this plan. Um, we had, uh, five winners, uh, that basically split, split twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, for that. And this year, again, we did another five winners. Um, two, three of the five have already signed leases and are open this year. One is, uh, uh, in negotiations on their lease now and the other one is, uh, finalizing choice of a, a location so they can sign their lease. So those are moving along nicely and we have gotten some great businesses out of that. Um, let's see, the, uh, Parklet Program, the, uh, city launched the grants to assist with parklets for restaurants. Um, we actually worked with a number of our businesses to help them get access to that funding. Um, so we helped them get about a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in grants, uh, that helped with their outdoor dining. Um, you've seen some of the parklets pop up in downtown, other people have done some patio work with that. Um, and it has helped considerably when they were working at, uh, zero indoor capacity. Um, we are, uh, we have started something with the, the Restart Grant, uh, which, uh, we launched back in May of two thousand twenty. This was when we were first coming out of our first lockdown and we had, uh, businesses that had suffered losses by, um, throwing away food, um, things that went to waste, uh, costs that had built up over those first couple of months of the pandemic. And as they were reopening, we wanted to find a way that we could help them, uh, offset those costs. So we were able to raise fifty-four thousand dollars, uh, that we distributed to our businesses in grants between one thousand to two thousand dollars. Thirty-one, uh, business, retail oriented businesses in downtown, most of those restaurants, uh, received that funding and were able to kinda pay off some debts and able to get open and running again. Um, unfortunately, soon after that, I think around, uh, end of June, July, we went back into a lockdown. Um, and they were facing similar circumstances, but some were able to stay open and keep functioning, so it did help, uh, to some degree. And then, uh, we again continue to, uh, be a resource for people looking to open up, uh, locations in downtown. Um, we have information available both on our website and that we, uh, we meet with people, tour them around and show them stuff. But we were able to help with, um, five businesses that located over twenty twenty. Let's see, uh, here's an overview of just kind of the last three years. You'll see that there's, um, fifty-nine businesses, uh, new businesses that opened. Uh, we actually assisted with sixty-seven property, uh, location assists during that time. Some of them opened, some of them haven't, some of them are negotiating leases, um, some we worked, got them to a certain point and they weren't able to open. That was something that hit us hard with the pandemic. We had a, a group of businesses ready to open, a, a good handful that, um, backed off for the time being because the, uh, they weren't sure that they would be able to stay open or how that would work. Uh, but we were happy to be able to assist in those ways. Um, with the total amount of grants, I'm sorry, did someone have a question?
Okay, no, go ahead.
Okay, um, over the last three years, we were able to give a hundred and twenty-one thousand.
Um, yeah, I'll probably only be able to text you, um, when they start closed session, cause I.
Francine, I can hear you.
She's muted now, it looks like. Um, we, we were able to give a hundred twenty-one thousand dollars in direct cash grants to our businesses over the last three years. That's facade grants, uh, the restart grants, uh, things like that. And then we assisted with those parklet grants, which is a hundred twenty-five thousand. And then you'll also see the, uh, number of e-blasts that we send to businesses over the last three years. And when you look back at what we did through COVID, how that ramped up to try to keep them updated with how everything was changing regularly. Uh, marketing has been an interesting, uh, subject for us this year. We were getting ready to launch our branding in two thousand twenty, brand new branding. Um, we had an ad campaign planned, events planned around it, and all of that came to a screeching halt. So we have been, uh, slowly rolling that out. We, we have our ambassadors in new uniforms, we put out the new logo and some other materials with that. Um, but, uh, street poll banners are up on Van Ness and Kern, we're working to get the Fulton ones done now. It's something we're working with the Streets Department to get the polls, uh, working correctly. Um, but yeah, there's a number of other initiatives, we received a Google Ad Grant. We received a Google Ad Grant to help us with our Google placement, and we've been taking full advantage of that. You'll see our social media numbers actually did go down, so did our website numbers in this new year, but that's because most of our traffic normally comes from events. So we had a record year in 2019, and 2020 took a huge hit, so it did decrease, but we, we see where most of that came from, events. We are still getting a fair amount of out-of-town visitors looking at our, our website to find information about Fresno, which a lot of it is related to events and looking to open businesses here as well. And then we do a number of different things for press outreach. You'll see, you know, we had our Central Valley Today segment, which will be starting again soon, it paused during the pandemic, but we send out news stories to try to keep everyone up to speed with what's happening downtown. And over the course of 2020, we had twenty-nine positive news stories covering what was happening. Events, as I mentioned, since we weren't able to do a lot, these are the events we were able to do. Some of the key things that came out of the events after we were kind of frozen on what we were doing in February, we were still able to do our Market on Kern over the summer, which didn't live up to most years, but it's because there was less employees downtown, but we were still able to do it, and it still had a positive effect on downtown, on bringing people out and giving them something else to look forward to. We did a couple of markets with Arte Americas as well, the Mercado Saison, which were weekend events aimed at just bringing people to Arte Americas so they could utilize the Plaza there in some way in order to have people on site. That was kind of an answer to problems they were having with vandalism and homeless activities at the site, they wanted to try to get it active again. And then the other big thing we did was our cleanup events. We had three big cleanup events that had two-hundred-and-eighty people participate in those, we're still doing those as well, and they were huge successes to clean up big chunks of downtown. The last three things we did on the events page were also virtual events, which we partnered with a number of different businesses to highlight those, which had pretty good responses online for something that was kind of untried up until the pandemic. And I'd say the biggest thing we did this year was we did purchase the Christmas tree from Mariposa Plaza, I'm sure most of you saw that. This was a split between the Downtown Fresno Partnership and the Downtown Fresno Foundation, but we were able to have that tree up from mid-November until early January. We had lots of people posing in front of it, we had lowriders posing in front of it, it was really great to see, especially at a time when people didn't have a lot else to look forward to, so. Here's an overview of the marketing events for the last three years. You'll see with digital media, especially social media, we've been very active and have had a lot of impressions and interactions with folks that way. Our web stats, we're still drawing in lots of people looking at stuff for our website and a lot of great positive news stories over the last couple of years, so. A big piece of what we do, and a lot of people don't realize this, because, you know, it's kind of a behind-the-scenes thing, but believe me, if it was gone, everybody would notice that the trash and everything was building up downtown. We have our ambassador patrols, and we do a number of environmental things to help keep the area looking good, as well as overnight security patrols. Some key things that came from this, during the pandemic, when a lot of the code enforcement had changed, the locking dumpsters that we have in Zones Two and Three, since there was no enforcement for that, a lot of people started unlocking them, so we were able to get our ambassadors back out, working with the businesses, and we're back up to a majority of those locked again, which helps keep homeless from pulling the trash out and spreading it all over alleys. We've, you know, we increased our private security patrols, especially in response to the pandemic. We cut back a little bit in 2019, but when we saw the, the, the broken windows and fires and stuff being started back in 2020, we increased those patrols again for a full eight hours each night, seven days a week, in Zones Two and Three, in order to help try to control that and minimize that. We also had all of our ambassadors working at seven days a week during the day to monitor all the properties in our district, see if there's areas that look like there's attempted break-ins or any other problems that they could work with property owners in order to remedy as quick as possible. And then also with, a big thing we did was taking over the street garbage cans on Kern Street. This is something the city used to maintain and had stopped during the pandemic. It was decided by the last administration that it wouldn't be a priority for them to maintain those cans, because there's no residential units there, so we actually took those in because we didn't want to see those go away, so we have started working with Mid Valley to maintain those cans. And here, if you take a look, our clean team ambassadors, they, they pick up trash as well as kind of monitor the area and look for problems that are going on. Picking up trash is a huge piece of it. We picked up almost 5,000 pounds more trash in 2020 than we normally do in other years, which is funny, because we had less people downtown, but because of the increased homeless activity we're seeing, we were seeing a lot more trash left behind, more people were camping out and stuff. So they did a great job with that, keeping everything clean. And then they, they, as I mentioned, they keep an eye out, so they encounter people with trespassing, illegal dumping, all types of stuff like that that they were finding as well, and were able to coordinate between Fresno and the city and Mid Valley to get a lot of those things cleaned up, working with police and security firms in order to make places more secure. And then also this year, we started homeless outreach, specifically one of our ambassadors, Brian, has been working to identify homeless individuals within our district, and instead of just kicking them down the road, he approaches them and works to try to build a rapport with them in order to see if he could get them into homeless services. It's not always successful, but we know from our conversations with Pavarello and the Rescue Mission that it usually takes eight to ten times of talking to someone in order to get them to accept help, so Brian just keeps at it, and we hope that it'll help get people off the streets instead of just pushing the problem somewhere else. We do pay for overnight security patrols. We spend about a little over $70,000 a year for overnight security patrols in the Fulton Zone and that Van Ness Corridor, Zones Two and Three, as we call them, the eight hours overnight, seven days a week. You'll see they had nine-hundred-seventy-one incidents that they responded to in 2020, which is higher than most years because of the homeless activity we're seeing mostly with fires and stuff being started. And then as far as environmental enhancements, you know, we have regular meetings with security teams, police, and some other groups like the Convention Center, where we could all share information, so we're all on the same page of issues we're facing, how we can help each other. We have a Clean and Green Committee, which focuses on trying to make the area look better and identify key areas, which the city is a partner in that as well, so it's mainly for communication. And then we did a couple stakeholder meetings where we discussed homeless issues and what was being done to address that. We had the county and the city and the shelters involved with those as well. And then we, we worked with the city to get the rollout of the Park Mobile App going, announcing it to the public and how our businesses can best use that. And we also helped get meters bagged to help our businesses when COVID started because of takeout and delivery options, they needed places for people to easily get access to those businesses, so we had a number of meters get bagged since they used downtown and had gone down, and it was quite helpful for our businesses. And here's a quick three-year look at what we've done. You'll see lots of trash picked up in just three years and kind of what we spent on our overnight security patrols. And then when you're looking at kind of environmental improvements between trash, landscaping, and banners, how much money we've spent there. For administration, our main focus over 2020 was getting started with our bid renewal, our P-Bid renewal, which is coming up, it needs to be renewed by 2022, so we are actively working on that. So we're taking first steps to get the information together on where we need to go and starting some outreach. Another key thing we did is we made our Board of Directors, we filled up all of our open seats on that with a great group of people and business leaders and property owners who are very supportive of downtown and will make stuff happen. And our other key administration focus was information sharing, both with public and with our business community, to let everyone know what's happening during COVID. A quick look at the Downtown Fresno Foundation, which is a separate 501(c)(3) that works with the Downtown Fresno Partnership to make programs happen. One of the main things that the foundation focused on this year was raising money to get these programs moving. Some of the key things we did was the Unity for Community Campaign, which was aimed at helping Community Regional Medical Center. We raised about $9,000 through a t-shirt campaign, selling t-shirts that would assist them. Root General, Heron Jaguar, T.W. Patterson were all partners and sponsors on that to make that program happen. The Restart Grants, which I mentioned earlier, they helped raise the money to get those and secure those sponsorships. The Christmas Tree. And Downtown Academy, which is normally our kind of young professionals group, where we introduce people to a behind-the-scenes look at downtown. It's a nine-month program where people, the students in this, which I say students, but they're all eighteen to fifty years old, they actually get to meet business owners, property owners, find out what really happens and what they need to do to function a business or own property downtown. They hear from planning on the processes of how you could go to develop downtown and things like that. We were only able to get three classes completed in 2020, and we're, we're going to restart that group here soon, now that we're getting better with COVID cases, so they can finish up. But it's been a great program, I think we are on its eighth year now, and it's turned out a lot of people who are huge supporters of downtown and love Fresno and just want to make this the best place on earth, so. And then with the Parklet Program, I mentioned the city grants, the Downtown Fresno Foundation was also able to raise $5,000 that we distributed to two businesses that launched parklets. These were determined before the pandemic, we had awarded those to get people moving on parklets, and then the pandemic hit, so it was just kind of an extra bit of help to get those happening. And looking forward to 2021, some of the things that we're focused on now, we're doing a business-to-business campaign that's just getting ready to wrap up. We've targeted the Bay Area, the Central Coast, and the Greater Central Valley to try to attract new businesses and investment to downtown Fresno. It's been a digital marketing campaign we're doing with Jeffrey Scott Agency, and it's, we've actually had quite a bit of eyes on the campaign as it's been moving forward. The numbers have come back pretty good for that. Following on that, we're, we're launching a business-to-consumer visitor campaign for downtown, that should be launching probably by late May, again, aimed at the same areas, Central Coast, Bay Area, and the Greater Central Valley, to drive people back to downtown. The goal was to have that coincide with being able to do events and open businesses again, so people actually had something to come to downtown, instead of just promoting an area that might be mostly closed down at the time. So, timing worked out perfect, and that should be launching here soon. You'll probably be seeing a lot of that on your social media feeds, as well as other online websites. We're continuing our COVID information distribution, it's a huge thing for our businesses to stay up to date with what's happening. We are going to do another round of Create Here and also a Stay Here Grant, which is aimed at helping businesses pay off some of the debts they've accumulated during the pandemic, but we are actively working on getting those rolling now. We're still working to connect our businesses with any kind of financial or technical support that could help get them through the last leg of the pandemic here. And then we are, currently we have both a facade grant open that closes today, I think is the last day for, and we're in the process of awarding mural grants as well to help beautify downtown and make some of the buildings look a lot better. And then finally, we're also doing developer support, providing any information for people looking to develop. We have lots of stats and basic numbers that people can utilize when talking to lenders or potential investors, that really kind of helps sell downtown, so we have all that info at our fingertips now, so. As far as events go, Market on Kern will be starting in May, and then we're working with the Grizzlies on doing some stuff for the upcoming season, which I don't want to announce yet, just in case the Grizzlies aren't fully sure on what's going to happen with those, but keep your eye out, we'll be making those announcements very soon. And we have some, some event applications into the city now. I actually just received notification from ABC that they are going to start doing limited ABC licenses again, so we're, looks like we're going to start moving forward with some events soon. And then hopefully by the late summer, end of the year, we're going to be able to do some big events again, have another Fulton Street Party and stuff like that. So, this is all very dependent on the COVID situation and where we're at. We really want to get the Christmas Parade back and all those things, so fingers crossed on them. And for environmental enhancements, we have added on spot cleaning in Zone One, which is something we hadn't done before according to our management plan that we have for the district, but it's been a priority since COVID started, because the areas started acquiring so much trash and businesses haven't been open. We wanted to make sure things look good for when people do come downtown and do the best we can to help people out. So we do have our clean teams out there, finding troubled areas, helping to get it cleaned up and looking good, so it just doesn't look like a disaster zone. We're still doing our quarterly event cleanup events, we just did the Great American Cleanup and had great turnout for that, I think we had a hundred-and-twenty-eight volunteers show up that day, was that last Saturday, and got the Brewery District, South Stadium area cleaned up there. We've started doing spot power washing for areas that need it, whether there's human waste or other things that end up on the sidewalks around properties. If it's an emergency situation, get it cleaned up, we're there to do that and help with it. As I mentioned, we're stepping up our homeless mitigation and outreach. And then a couple of things that we have submitted to the city, we're waiting to hear back on, is the idea of Adopt a Planner. There's some city-owned planters in different parts of downtown, which we have businesses willing to adopt, have them moved over to their area, and they will start maintaining those. Currently, the planters just sit empty with no plants in them. Some of them have had fires started in them in the past, so we want to get those adopted out so people can actually use them to beautify the area. And then Adopt an Alley is something we've been working on with Mark Stanjerew about, where people can really take ownership of their alleys and make them look good, but even possibly use them for events and stuff going forward. And from an administration side, we are going to be going into full swing with the P-Bid renewal here in the next few weeks. The council will be hearing more of that in the coming months. And then we're really focused on trying to reduce administrative expenses, just to make sure there's not a lot of overhead stuff. We've been doing a pretty good job of that, but we want to try to keep those low so more money goes right back into our services we provide. And that is pretty much everything I have for that. I'm happy to answer any questions for folks.
All right, thank you. Before we bring it up here to the dais, I want to give an opportunity for our colleagues that are joining us via Zoom, if they had some questions, if they could go first, that way I can make sure we accommodate them. Do we have Councilmember Soria or Karbasi on? Do they have their hands raised or anything? All right, we'll bring it back up. Councilmember Arias?
Thank you, Council President. A couple of questions for the, for the council's benefit. A few weeks ago, we had some issues with the District Attorney's Office parking on the street parking and taking up all the meter parking for the local businesses. Has that issue been resolved with the District Attorney?
Yes, yeah, it has. We actually got direct communication with the District Attorney, she was great, I've talked to her staff. I just checked in again with the businesses there on Van Ness, and they're happy, so everything seems to be going really well right now.
Perfect. And then I, I know that recently we reassigned the downtown unit to a little more northern part of the downtown area too, and we've seen some increase in crime. When do we expect to get an update from the Chief of Police on what he's planning to do?
Yes, we have that update, we've been working on that for about a week, so we, we're going to get that out to the council and share our plan for adjusting our staffing, our security staffing in the area.
And would that come before we start talking budget?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're going to get that, that's because it's an immediate need right now that we're working to address.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And then a couple of requests that I have for Jimmy and for the staff to work on. I've been asking for quite some time for commercial garbage compactors to be installed downtown, for those of you who are not aware. Whenever somebody forgets to lock their bin, their garbage bin, which they've been doing a good job of reminding commercial tenants, the homeless population goes through it, and then we have to then deploy resources to go pick up the garbage all over again. Garbage compactors are the standard for urban cores and downtowns. They've been in Sacramento for decades, so I'd like to see public utilities come forward with something. I know that that side of the operation is privatized, but as you guys bring these contracts to extend for multiple years with these private contractors, I'd like to see the downtown garbage compact, compactors issue resolved and incorporated. And I also like to encourage Jimmy to look at what other cities have done for downtowns. They actually have solar trash compactors. It just makes it a lot easier, it protects the garbage cans from being emptied out by folks, it also reduces the amount of times people have to go out and empty their garbage cans. I know they're pretty pricey, but again, if we're going to renew garbage contracts, if we're going to revisit utility rate increases, this is time for us to find some long-term savings by doing some more modern, you know, equipment and techniques that have been used in other cities. And just in closing, I know we're also working, City Manager, thank you for all the help, on kind of revitalizing the water tower. Hopefully, we can announce soon that we're going to do something uniquely different with that and add to the downtown atmosphere, but that's been an issue too for us. During the pandemic, a lot of the downtown events shut down, a lot more property crimes occurred, and so now where as we get to reopen, we want to, you know, see some of these events come back. So I would just also ask you, in closing, to work at the Downtown Partnership around the special events permit. We picked up that issue in 2019, we dropped it in 2020 for good reasons, but as we reopen, I want to make sure we. sure we don't end up getting inundated in our office from requests from downtown folks who want to go and have special events. So, we just gotta figure out how to streamline that, how to manage the costs, the expectations, also everything from who gets to decide how many contract police officers must be assigned for event. I know that becomes extremely cost prohibitive. In other states like Clovis, that isn't a requirement of some of the events. So, if y'all can wrestle with that so that we don't have to do one-offs and have to intervene when somebody's trying to do some event downtown, that requires all of our attention, you know, in order to get it resolved.
I want to respond if I could to that, and I think we're on the same page. In terms of promoting outdoor events, we want to be very, very flexible and allow folks to have their process expedited in terms of hosting these outdoor events. And what have we can do to facilitate those, especially in light of the fact that people have been, you know, cooked up over the last year during the pandemic? I think it's important that we open up our city in a huge way. We open up our streets, we do everything we can to encourage folks to get outdoors and take advantage of that social interaction when it's safe to do so.
Thank you, Mayor. And we will be, I know the High Speed Rail work with the downtown businesses on upcoming closure, and city staff has done a better job this time around on holding, you know, the feet to the fire of the rail company before we officially close, make sure all the permits are in place. So, thank you for that. That will be a disruption for a couple of years, so closing some of those Fulton streets for events will be critical. I know we haven't done it since we opened the street back up, but it was designed to have, to be temporarily closed. So, I'm just hoping that all that stuff will be smoother this time around in two thousand nineteen.
Councilmember Arias, you also reminded me, the insurance is a huge issue when it comes to events, so we really need to figure that out, especially for some events. And, you know, equally important, the tower, because it shares some of the same challenges as the downtown area when it comes for special events.
Yep. Yeah, for the administration, for some reason, risk management doubled and tripled the amount of insurance requirements for events and made a lot of those block parties and other events cost prohibitive. I know we were planning before the pandemic to have a workshop on how we got to increasing escalating costs that way, but if y'all can be cognizant of that, and, because I don't want to have to be in this dais explaining why we're charging somebody fifteen thousand dollars of, you know, contract time for police inspectors and all that, simply to have an outdoor event that we're all encouraging.
Yeah, we, is Jimmy there still? Yeah, we had a great call with Jimmy and a number of event promoters, I think it was last week. We made it clear that the administration wants to open up the street to a party. And so, we talked with them about putting a cost estimates together for what would it cost to close a block, two blocks, and then close from Tuolumne all the way down to Mono and just start putting those budgets together and figure out, okay, how can we work together to have these events and just get people downtown and having a good time? We want to have a good time downtown.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. That concludes our Workshop Three A. We will now move on to Item Three B.
Council President?
Yeah.
I believe Mike Karbasi has his hand up.
Oh, Councilmember Karbasi, did you have a question?
I do. Thank you, Mr. President. There was some mention of the District Attorney's Office, and it really got me thinking to a conversation I had with one of the ADAs. So, you know, it's really great that they stayed. It's a county facility that stayed in downtown. And I know they act near the core, but, you know, these are people that, they're victims of, like they put away, like against children and elders. But this person told me, and wasn't complaining, was just saying, oh, yeah, I know it's a great building, but we just have a ten to fifteen minute walk. Now, as a city, what are we doing? What is the plan right now to help them? Is it just that they have a lot more away and they just walk, or is there a long-term plan?
I couldn't hear the question. I couldn't hear the question. Is there a long-term plan for?
Parking situation.
Oh, yeah. So, Dan Zach, we've assigned Dan Zach to be our downtown development czar, and part of what we're talking with him about is a parking strategy. We're gonna have to come up with a parking strategy. We talk extensively about, here we are, working our tails off to get people to open housing downtown, retail downtown, mixed juice downtown, and we're not gonna look too smart if we don't have a parking strategy. So, parking strategy is part of our overall plan to do it. Now, I can't tell you right now where we're gonna put the decks and where we're gonna put the lots, but we know we've got to have a parking solution as we start to attract more people downtown. And that'll be a part of the discussion we have with High Speed Rail, because for their facility, they'll need some parking structures as well, so are there some partnership opportunities that we can, we can work on with those folks as well? So, but parking is a high priority.
Okay, thank you, Tommy.
Thank you, Councilmember. Now, we'll move on to Item Three B, Workshop, City of Fresno Homeless Housing Strategy. And I believe it's the City Manager's Office that will be conducting this presentation.
Yes, thank you, Council President. City Council, let's see if we can make this work. Need them to go to presentation mode. There it is, ta-da! Awesome. Thank you. Okay, so, a lot of discussion today, I mean, since we've arrived to administration, right? It's been a lot of discussion about homeless. And so, homeless is a priority for you, homeless is a priority for the mayor, homeless is a priority for me, homeless is a priority for communities. So, let's talk about what we're thinking on homelessness. So, one of the things I want to just review is just, there was a ten-year plan to end homelessness back in two thousand and six, published in two thousand and five. We're looking at this as part of a housing continuum. That's how the model we want to kind of look for. I'm gonna give you an update on the Project Home Key, the update and the path forward, some investments that we're proposing for homeless outreach and services. And then talk about a homeless housing development plan. That's something we really, as a city, just like we would do a capital plan for roads, we do a capital plan for water parks, we're gonna do a capital plan for housing. We gotta have a, we gotta have a plan on how we're gonna build it. And then just summary of where we're planning on investing homeless in housing in FY22. So, in two thousand and five, the President of the DARE Continuum of Care published this document, it was their ten-year plan. These were the three tenants that they identified. And the things I wanted to highlight were provide transitional case management services, that's a good idea, that's kind of what we're thinking about today, as we need it. Expand the availability of permanent supportive housing, that's a great idea, that's what we need to do today. And then provide wraparound services to promote housing stability. Again, increase the job training, skill development, employment opportunities. Again, that's another discussion we're having today as a need we've got to, we've got to address. So, fifteen years ago, this was the idea, and as I've been looking at what we've been proposing to do, it's very consistent with this. We just gotta continue to move forward. Using this plan, there was a report put out by U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness that indicated that by two thousand, by two thousand seventeen, we had reduced fifty, by fifty-nine percent the reduction in homelessness here in the city. It was the highest in any city on the West Coast. So, it appeared to have worked. Now, is that what, all it took, or was there some other things? It's still what we're working on, but we were able, using this model, to reduce homelessness through two thousand seventeen. So, here's this model we're looking at. We're looking at it as a continuum, that we start with people who are homeless on the street, we get them into emergency shelter, get them somewhere stable overnight. From there, we transition them into a triage center that's ninety days. We'll talk a little bit more about what we see happening there and what we're learning from our partners. You can't stay there forever, though, that's a ninety-day model. Now, we gotta get you into transitional housing, something that's indefinite, just get you some, some support to move into more permanent housing, and then we get you an affordable. And then we want to graduate people all the way up to owner-occupied housing. And so, there is the possibility that we can get you off the street, take you through this model, and get you into an owner-occupied housing status. And that's kind of our plan, that's our goal, is to try and achieve that. So, let's talk a little bit about that. So, intake right now is up. You know, we've, we were good through seventeen and then nineteen hit, twenty hit, and we had a seventy percent, about a seventy percent increase in homelessness between those two years. And it's worse this year, but we didn't do a point-in-time count this year because just no, there was, with the COVID conditions, nobody wanted to get out and do the count. But there's been some preliminary data out there that certainly the number's gone up. So, this is what we're faced with, is the numbers are increasing on our intake to these facilities. So, the way the system is set up right now, we have existing emergency shelter beds, there are about three hundred and fifteen in the system. We have some really amazing partners that are helping with this, Pavarello, Turning Point, the ones that are listed here, just really doing yeoman's efforts to help us get folks taken care of and off the street. And then we're adding new capacity to that system, so we have existing motel rooms that we purchased in partnership with the Fresno Housing Authority, that's added some beds, rooms, I should say. We've got some ideas. Fresno Housing Authority has some options on some motels, so that's another capacity we can, we can add. The city has the Travel Inn, which we will be adding to this inventory. And then there are some folks around the city that have expressed interest in their existing motels in other parts of the city that would like to participate in the housing program for homelessness. So, we're having those discussions right now. So, we're, we seem to be able to increase the capacity on this front end. And then ideally, what we do is we get them from these sheltered conditions into some type of a housing model, single-family, multifamily, all kinds. We do it in the growth areas, we do it in the infill areas, all kinds. We're talking about accessory units, looking at, you know, can we, can we work with some mobile home parks to do some things, the tiny home villages, but get them from this shelter model into housing, all forms. The challenge we've got, and we've talked about it, it's around the state, it's around the country, housing crisis. We just lack inventory of housing stock to serve these people. And so, when you do that, we can't get them out of the shelter resources that we're currently investing in. And if we can't get them out of there, we can't take them in at intake, and we wind up with more people on the street. So, this is where we are right now, where we just can't get housing, we don't have enough housing capacity available to get folks out of the shelters that we've invested in, the shelter facilities we invested in, and so we have more people on the street. So, if I had to lay, you know, present my ideas on where we are, if we can get after this housing number, that will build more housing, all forms everywhere, get people out of there, which allows us to get people out of the shelter facilities we're investing in and then get more people off the street. So, this is the model we want to try and focus on and advance forward. So, I want to talk a little bit about one of the models that we're using, is this Project Home Key, and the idea of taking existing motels and then converting them to shelter, triage centers, emergency facilities. They've all got new names, and again, I want to thank the Fresno Housing Authority for making this data available and helping us understand just what this is going to cost on a go-forward basis. So, one of the ideas I want to just look is the schedule. So, the Fresno Housing Authority accepted the award in November, they closed the escrow in December, the day after they started beginning the repairs of the work. And then sixty days later, they had a certificate of occupancy issued and they had people going. So, it's about a sixty-day turnaround with these ones, from the time we acquire it, the time we invest and we move it, get people into them. The total investment on these four facilities that were purchased is about thirty-nine million dollars. Doesn't happen, that doesn't happen without the state stepping in and showing up with twenty million dollars out of the sky. And then the city had additional funding that it was granted as part of all the other CARESAC stuff, though. So, these dollars just came out, and lacking that, we couldn't have made this move we had. So, we gotta take advantage of this, and the mayor's working with some folks at the state on the big cities to see if we can get another infusion of money from the state. The HUD is gonna be putting some money out, so we've got, we know we'll get some additional HUD money. And then FEMA's now identified that they're capable of doing hundred percent reimbursement for certain kinds of sheltering situations. One of them would be renting units from the private sector, so we're gonna be looking at that model as well. But it's forty million dollars is what it took, and again, doesn't happen without the feds and the state stepping up. So, let's just talk about what it costs, because I want, as we go forward, we want to think about this. So, these are the, these are the four facilities that were purchased. They have their new names shown, but you can see, we had the, had to purchase the facility, repair and replacement of some of the assets inside them and the furniture and soft costs. So, seventy-eight thousand dollars a room, sixty-six, fifty-three, fifty-nine, sixty-two is the average, so. And when you look at the data on how these purchases are coming through, it's really on a per-room basis. It could be on a postage stamp, but if it's got a lot of rooms, it's gonna be sold based on the room count. So, that's the thing we kind of want to watch, is how, what's those room counts are. So, right now, on a go-forward basis, my recommendation is that we look at seventy thousand dollars per room for the acquisition and the renovation to get folks into the, into these facilities.
Tommy, can I just pause you there?
Yep.
I just want to remind the public and the council that for new build construction, we're averaging three hundred and fifty or four hundred thousand per unit to build affordable housing. So, as much as it cost us to do this, it's been the most, you know, fiscally responsible and efficient thing to do for the temporary part. There is gonna be more cost when we convert them to permanent housing. Some of them will be tear downs, others will be complete renovations, but it is a pretty cost-efficient way that the state gave us and its staff has been able to execute.
And thanks to the Housing Authority, it took you sixty days. You know, you can build a brand-new house right now and get it built for sixty days with the way lumber and things are.
I think that constitutes a compliment to the new administration, too.
Oh, okay, well, thank you. Okay, so now we gotta operate them. That's buying them, getting people into them. Now, we gotta operate them. So, again, we look at these units and what they're costing to operate. Again, staffing for the homeless services, so that's the wraparound we're providing. Maintenance and staff inspections, this is just the, the maintenance folks that are working around the site, utilities, food, all of the items. So, this is the all-in cost. So, the cost of the room is about sixteen thousand to ten thousand. So, again, what we're recommending is that we, we go ahead in right now and estimate twenty thousand dollars per room for operations, maintenance, and service costs. If it's less than, what I don't want to be is low bidder on bid day. I want to be, have some room in there. So, we're gonna recommend that we look at twenty thousand dollars per room for the operation, maintenance, and the service costs for these, for these facilities. And again, if, if we get, when we get fully involved on this and are doing it well, we're, we're hopefully turning these rooms three, four, five times a year with people, because we're getting them in, getting them services, getting them trained, getting them worked, and getting them to a housing, a different housing situation, more permanent housing situation. So, that's the goal here, is just to flip these rooms with people as we're receiving them in and getting them out into permanent housing. So, then the next step, as Councilmember Arias talked about, we've got to convert them to permanent housing. And so, one of the things we have to think about, and this is one of the ideas, concepts that the Fresno Housing Authority has prepared, is certainly subject to funding availability, but we're gonna change the use. So, it's gonna go from a transient to a permanent occupancy, and just building code just treats you different if you're going from a transient to permanent. So, we'll have the building code upgrade, add the kitchenettes, reconfigure the units to create multi-room apartments. We're gonna certainly apply for as many grants and tax credits as we can get. And the Housing Authority thinks the conversion's about eighteen months for this process, and so one of the things we're thinking about is that we go forward to purchase more hotels, is maybe we take a few of those, or one of them at least, and start from day one, we're gonna go to permanent housing on it and just get it permanent housing, so we can get people out of the shelter situation into a permanent housing solution. So, that's one of the models we're gonna look at, is just buy it and go right directly to permanent housing conversion. So, let's go back to the housing continuum, and so what we, what we're gonna do is propose to make a modification to that. And so, one of those is look at the homeless sheltering triage center as a module of work we have to do. We're gonna look at deploying the HART team. They're gonna lead our city's homeless outreach and engagement efforts. We're gonna dispatch them through the three-one-one center. And the HART team lead will be in the City Manager through Planning and Development, so that's the group that will receive the calls, dispatch the teams, put them together. We need to continue to invest in low-barrier shelters and services, got to continue to do that. That is a valuable service for the, for the community and for us. Continue to invest in the triage centers and services. Continue to purchase motels for conversions, and then continue to work with the private sector folks to rent housing units for homeless. Again, you allowed us to do the, I think, the ninety-day with the sans. Councilmember Sparza has turned us on to some folks on Blackstone that have an interest in finding out how they might be able to participate in a program. So, I think some people have reached out to the mayor as well, expressing an interest in saying, hey, I think I can, I want to do this as well, let's talk about it. So, I think this number five is one that we can fully leverage, and the way we're reading the FEMA paperwork from the Office of Emergency Services at the state, is there may be money they have, funding they have available to help us rent those units at that level. So, on these low-barrier shelters, again, we're looking for stuff that's twenty-four-hour access, no requirements on income, bring your pets, your partners, your possessions, don't worry about sexual orientation. Space is limited, though, so do everything we can to get the people in there. So, we need to continue to invest in the low-barrier shelters. On the shelter services, this is what we're finding with our partners that we're working with on this, is that the onsite case management is really important. We can coordinate the services for the physical, mental wellbeing. And here's, this number three one is one we've been hearing a lot about, is just helping folks get their identification, their birth certificate, the social security cards, their income qualifications. Because if we can get that data for them, and a lot of folks are showing up to the shelters and the triage centers without this stuff, if we can help them get that, then we can income-qualify them, find out what resources and other services they may qualify for, and we can get them to a permanent housing situation with at least some income, reuniting with family members, housing search. The one that we had a call yes, last week, thanks to Mr. Councilmember Sparza's in our discussions with UCSF about the COVID testing and the vaccination, is talking to work with them about exploring the, creating a shelter medicine practice at UCSF that would be a rotation for the residents. I've seen that model used in other cities, and so we talked about it very high level last week as we were talking about the other work. And so the idea that we could create that kind of residency option for folks to just see that, experience it, you're going to see all kinds of things. And so they were open to discussing it, and so I want to run and really push that one. Homeless Assistance Response Team, so this is really replacement of HTF, the housing, the Homeless Task Force. Again, multidisciplinary team led by, and the, the people that will engage directly with the, with the homeless to talk to them about services and sheltering are going to be outreach workers that we're going to be retaining on a fee-for-service basis to help us do that. And then we had a discussion last night about the Police Reform Commission. That was one of the recommendations, was hey, let's not make the police the first responder. Let's let other people be the first responder, and we can back that up with other services. So we're looking to, this is the, that's the team we'll put together. And here's what they'll do, they'll look to outreach for housing and services. I think you're up to seventy percent, Mayor, on, on the people contacting and then taking the services and the housing. We, they will be the ones that respond to reports for public health and safety risks. So the, we've got, you know, somebody's got a homeless question or a homeless situation, they can call, and this group, this group will be dispatched. We'll initiate the investigation removal of criminal activity from encampments. Again, I want to thank Councilmember Sparza for advising us of a situation in his district. And, you know, we, we engaged with the police department, they put a great plan together and cleaned that one up from the criminal activity that was there. Go ahead and schedule the trash removal and re, from encampments. Again, we're not going to move folks, in some, in all instances, we're not able to move folks because we don't have the housing for them, but we can make it a safe place and a clean place by getting the trash and the, and the debris removed. I have the DPU right now is working to look at cost estimates for portable shower facilities. We're just working on the logistics of trailered, we have a truck, how do we deliver? So we, we're working on the cost estimates to, and this will be something we would rotate around the city. One day here, one day here, just, just for the day, we would make it available for folks to get some kind of basic hygiene while they're out there. And again, if we can get them the hygiene, take care of the debris, make it a safe space, you know, we can buy some time until we get this housing inventory addressed.
Hey, Tommy, I have a question to go back on the number one, the multidisciplinary team approach.
Yes.
And I'm all about, you know, I'm supporting the efforts, obviously, for what, what the Police Commission wants to do in terms of the recommendation. But this council approved, and I think we talked about it during budget, we wanted to hire or to work with the consultant that is doing kind of cahoots, which is a program that started, I forget what, what other community, but it is a different response model. I know that a lot of the homeless advocates and service providers have had a chance to, to kind of see it, and they, they liked that response model. So is that, is this what you guys are creating? Is it going to be, is there more work to be done? Because that's what I was anticipating, that, you know, you'd get actually the providers, the, you know, mental health folks, all, all those folks that are connected to the issue of homelessness so that we can essentially create a better response model.
Yeah, so for the, for the homelessness, we're going to go with the CBOs that we're currently using that kind of have those people of expertise and, or a familiarity with the homeless situation, and engage with them about services and housing. We are looking at models that fit the cahoots for, in terms of responding to nine-one-one calls that might involve something other than, you know, a criminal act. It's just, you know, somebody's having, in a distressed situation. So we're looking at the cahoots model. Francine Kane, Assistant City Manager Francine Kane, is also looking at a model out of Austin, Texas, that they just started pilot testing, a very similar model, they're not sending out. And they actually, in that model, they adjust their nine-one-one center so that they can transfer calls of that nature to a very specialized person, and then they dispatch services out that way. And then we just saw today that St. Petersburg, Florida, is having a similar. So everybody's kind of, this thing you guys are looking to do, everybody around the country's looking to figure it out, too. So we're, we're in good company. But yes, we, we want to change the model of how we dispatch services for certain kind of calls that aren't, you know, property-on-property or people-on-property kind of issues. So yes, that's what we want to bring to you guys to consider.
Is that going to be part of, like, budget, or are we going to? Because I know that I had, like, a working group, we kind of stopped because we wanted to wait on the Police Reform Commission, and then, you know, obviously with the new administration. So my staff was leading this ad hoc group meeting with county providers, specifically homeless advocates as well, you know, so that we can develop a model, not just, because it was coming out of, obviously, the Police Reform Commission. So we wanted to make sure that we have the experts at the table helping us develop.
No, I think that'd be great, and I apologize, I was not aware you were doing that. So now that I'm aware you're doing that, let's get together and talk about that and how we want to, how we want to put that together.
Tommy, let me, let me, let me add something. You know, so the, the cahoots model out of Oregon, Eugene, is the, the way that they are able to do that is the fact that Eugene has, it's, it's a county, and the fact that the mental health or the behavioral health folks work for the same boss as does the police department and all the other services. And so with these, city and the county of Fresno, obviously, the county has all social service, behavioral health. So this model that we're putting together is really a partnership. But dealing with the homeless, this HART response, Homeless Assistance Response Team, is not that model. This, as, you know, vast majority of the people we're dealing with that are out there on the streets that are homeless are not, do not face a mental health crisis, the vast majority of them. So the Eugene model was specific to calls coming into the center, and it involves somebody with a mental health crisis, and then that, that was that team's response. So we will be developing that, but we are involving the, the implementation team for Commission on Police Reform to allow them to fully vet that. But we are having conversations as to how to better do that without rushing it.
Mayor, as far as I know, because I, we actually had the cahoots guy come and talk to our ad hoc committee. It was, yes, for mental health, but it also included response to homelessness or homeless folks, like, when they're out in the neighborhood or whatnot, like, for the outreach portion. So I'm not sure why you, you think that that's not what the issue's the address. I think they do. And I was suggesting that we, obviously, we create a model that fits for the city, but we do have to have, like, a timeline, and that was, that's what I was interested in figuring out. Okay, how are we going to transition out? Homeless Task Force has, is critical in the sense that they're good backup, and that's what the outreach workers have told us. You know, for them, it's like, when they go into a situation that may be sketch, having Homeless Task Force be there as backup is a good thing, but it shouldn't be them directly responding to these or trying to clean up the, the encampments. We should have a model that is, that the response is different. Without, and law enforcement is a backup for issues that arise.
That, that's the HART team. That's exactly, realizing street outreach workers, some King's View from the FOB and Rescue Mission. And, but the police, you'll see on these project off-ramp, you'll, you'll notice that the police officers are generally out of sight and only, same with CHP. They're only going to respond if there's a, a need to protect someone or to enforce the laws. The, the other element, though, is that there are some of the encampments where there's criminal activity, like we saw at one-eighty and Tyler, where police officers had to go in there before the outreach workers in order to eradicate that criminal element, and then the outreach workers came in behind them. So look forward to working with you on it as we not only do the HART team, but also our mental health response.
All right, thank you.
Yep, and then as we look at the priority areas, so as everyone knows, freeways, public health and safety, we just, you just, I'm glad we're, we focused on that, because that could be, it has been devastating. Want to look at the public schools and the parks, and again, it brought to our attention from Councilmember Arias, just protecting the children and making sure we're not getting them in contact or in proximity to those areas that that might create a threat for.
Tommy, if I may, I, I do want to make sure that council focuses on this, on this point number three, because I don't want to hear later that, you know, this was done in a small group and nobody knew what was going on. If you recall, our committee discussed, there's hundreds of encampments, how do we prioritize them? So far, the mayor has prioritized encampments on the freeways. We support that, we house those individuals, although the ninety-nine still has hundreds of people. That will come, you know, when it's turned. The, the conversation we had, though, is a lot of these encampments are moving into neighborhoods. A lot of, in my district, they went from the top of the freeway to the bottom of the freeway near the residential homes. And those are not being touched, they're not being cleaned, they're not being moved. It all comes down to the amount of units that are available to house people in. But we made it a point to ensure that encampments that are near schools and parks and residential neighborhoods get prioritized. So as we hear from other folks who say there's encampments near a commercial or industrial section, it might be there, because we're trying to get to the ones near schools first. As we reopen schools and kids are walking to school now, those have to be prioritized. So, and I want to be completely upfront with the mayor, once we're down with the ninety-nine, it's going to be very hard for me to prioritize freeways above schools and parks, especially as we reopen the economy. So I just want to be very upfront with everyone, that there's limited resources, limited time, and limited hotel rooms, and we just can't have this domino effect where we're pushing encampments near schools and parks. When we're asking people to reopen the schools, when we're asking people to come back to parks, we have to be able to prioritize that. So I know everybody's been patient, and we're all trying to work with the best that we can, but I want to make sure that the public and the council knows that this is a recommended prioritization of the homeless committee, and it's up for debate.
Is that, is that part of the council subcommittee? Correct, okay. I don't want to debate that one again, but we, we, we're in agreement. Ninety-nine freeway has a hundred and one folks left, eighty-three on one side, eighteen on the other. As soon as the Travel Inn is complete, they have a hundred and twenty beds, we will be transitioning the ninety-nine freeway, that's it, will be predominantly done. Forty-one's done, one-sixty-eight, one-eighty, Golden State, and then ninety-nine. And then the priority will be exactly as you said, we'll, we'll be dealing with public schools, parks, and neighborhoods.
And I think it was part of the mayor's discussions with Caltrans, Highway Patrol, our folks. Once we clear the freeways, we got to keep them clear. And so that is also the thing, because we don't want to go back to them either. We want to keep them clear, get them clear now and keep them clear. So back to the, the continuum, so that's kind of our plan on how we want to manage for the, the homeless folks off the street, get them off the street, get them in the shelters, get them in the triage. Now let's talk a little bit about get the housing piece done. And so first thought, first recommendation is that we're going to prepare a housing development plan for city-owned property, look at the tiny home villages or some other similar high-density model. We do own a lot of property, staff is currently running around putting the GIS maps together on how we want to do that. Look at investing in third-party affordable housing projects, so we get these applications all the time. So we'll go ahead and continue to look at investing in those. Converting motels to the permanent, promote and encourage accessory dwelling units. So I think it was either this council meeting or last council meeting, you approved planning and development. So Director Jennifer Clark has now the ability to create some templates for accessory dwelling units that people can come in, and once they have picked the model they want, they go out and probably seven days later, they can start building it. So we want to get these things built as quick as we can. We also have provisions to provide move-in deposit assistance, because this is one of the things we were hearing from the, our homeless partner, our homeless and shelter partners, was that Fresno Highway Authority's been very generous making Section Eight vouchers available, but then they missed, they don't have the twenty-five-hundred dollars to do the first months, last months, the security deposits. So we're going to go ahead and fill that in, and then look at providing the down payment assistance for first-time homebuyers. So we, we believe we've got to fill this whole pipeline across, so that's, that's the plan that we're proposing. On this housing development plan, so we're looking, it basically, it's a capital program. Think of it that way, it's like we were building anything else, identifying those city-owned properties. We want to target those that are near public transit, grocery services, pharmacies, pharmacy, medical, so that people don't have to have a car, if they don't have one, you know, that they can get access to this stuff quickly. Certainly got to review the zoning and development restrictions, get the entitlements done, get it permitted for the housing project, this is the city would do this. We'd identify the funding sources to get the fund, the off-site infrastructure built, if we need a bus stop, if we need a curb and gutter, if we need, you know, the water and sewer taps made available, get that done. And then ideally what we would do is we, we'd have a, what we would call basically a track map or some kind of entitlement that then we can make available to the private sector or public sector and start building those projects. So we'll take care of the offsites, we'll get there the entitlements, and then we'll bring folks in to help get this stuff built. And then again, we want to test these tiny home villages or other similar high-density models that, on city property. But we have a lot of property, and we've really got to activate it and start putting some, some housing on it. So back to this item, so here's, that's kind of our plan.
City manager?
Yes.
Just a reminder, we have city-owned property in the whole city.
Oh, yes, oh, I agree, yes.
So.
Perfect, I agree.
Just to be clear, Mayor, a citywide solution for a citywide problem.
That's right. We started in District Three, and I'm just kidding, we didn't start in District Three. We're looking, we're looking at properties across the city, correct. All right, so here's the expenditure plan for FY22, through all these, so it's about twenty-five million dollars based on currently available funding from the feds, the state, and some of our resources. We have twenty-five million dollars to invest next year. The Homeless Assistance Response Team will take a piece of that, the shelter beds, Project Home Key, the down payment assistance, move-in security deposits. Affordable housing project by others is the biggest, biggest expenditure. And then we have other money for tenant landlord counseling, rapid rehousing, some rental assistance that we have available from some of the federal and state entitlements. But twenty-five million is what we're, what we're planning to program next year, based on currently available resources. So mayor's working with the big city mayor, see if we can get that number up. We think HUD's going to add some more money, that's going to go up. Housing and community development at state, we think we can get more money from that, that's going to go up. So twenty-five is what we're starting with, and now we got to bring in these other dollars. So let's think about the, on the housing, and we want to, if we want to do the shelters, if we want to take motels and convert them to permanent housing or just the temporary housing, depending on which one you look at, so it's about eleven and a half million dollars per motel, and this is based on buying a hundred-unit motel out there, so it'd be about eleven and a half million dollars. Fresno Housing Authority has identified three hotel, three motels that they've kind of identified as, as possible targets. And then they're actively looking at some others across the city, not just in District Three. And so we'll take advantage of this, and again, right now, we have those projects under contract options. We're just all waiting for the money to fall out of the sky, whether it's fed money, we'll use that first. If it's state money, we'll use that first, if it's somebody else's money.
Ashland and ninety-nine has a potential motel that is abandoned there, that is a lot of blight. It's right off the ninety-nine on Ashland.
Ashland and ninety-nine, we will, we will write that one down and make some inquiries, thank you.
City manager, how, of, of these numbers, how much, if any, is general funds?
This is, none of this is general fund, this is all going to come out of entitled, either state or federal entitlements or these other dollars that are coming in.
Yeah, just for the record, thank you.
And then Tommy, in the past, the council had previously allocated, I think it was a hundred thousand dollars of the HEAP or HAP money, I don't know, to do cleanup, like, trash pickup and stuff like that, and the homeless were supposed to be hired to do that. I am interested in seeing more of that, you know, especially with the efforts of beautifying Fresno. I think that it would be a great opportunity to create, you know, job opportunities for some of these folks. I know that Caltrans submitted a proposal to Governor Nusa on, for this upcoming budget, where they're trying to put resources into cleaning up freeways, but doing it in a way where they're hiring those folks that, you know, would not necessarily be able to get a job very easily, and hopefully leading them into a pipeline into, you know, out of homelessness and then future job. So I mean, I will be interested in seeing some of that. I don't know if you guys are going to do anything in the budget, but we, I don't even know what the update is on the hundred thousand and the, and those that were supposed to be hired that were homeless.
Yeah, so Council President Soria, the, the two things that are happening, number one is the Fresno mission has come to us with a proposal to do that very thing, where we would contract with them and that they would hire the, the homeless, the folks that were previously homeless, and to pay them for that litter removal throughout our. removal throughout our city, uh, and we're open to doing that with other organizations as well. And then, uh, one of the ask that we are making of the state, not only for dealing with, uh, you know, the homeless, housing the homeless and services, but is also those things that occur as a result of our homeless population in the city, and that is an increase in, in trash.
Uh, Mayor-
And having the funds to, and I'll finish here shortly, and having the, uh, the funds that will allow us to hire folks to, to make that happen.
That, that's great, and, um, I know that, like you said, you're, we're open to other organizations, I, I submit, since, you know, we had a very robust conversation earlier today about transparency and, you know, um, RFPs or, you know, we want to make sure that maybe we do an RFP or RFQ, there are several other, um, community-based, um, nonprofits that have started some of that work, like I could name one in my district, Neighborhood Industries, um, has demonstrated a capacity to do that as well already, and a track record. Um, so I think, you know, maybe putting it out so that it isn't a competitive process, um-
Councilwoman, I, I think Councilmember Beriffy wants to second that motion. For transparency-
We, we, we are definitely going to be opening up whoever wants to, um, submit proposals, we will, uh, welcome all of them. Um, as I said, the only one we've gotten so far, and it was last week, was from the mission, but, uh, I'm sure there's, uh, a lot of other organizations out there that will be submitting as well.
But, um, that's what I guess I'm trying to figure out, what is the scope, you know, because if people are just submitting proposals without understanding the scope, the parameters, all of that good stuff, then, um, you know, I think that, in the spirit of, if we're gonna move in that route where we're gonna expect that we have RFQs and RFPs, that we start with this stuff, and that we set the parameters and scope so that we don't just get random proposals.
Well, we're, we're not getting random proposals, uh, I have a city manager that is very much in tune as to how to do an RFQ and RFP.
Yeah, we, and we have, um, Councilmember Soria, we have, um, Mike Lima's currently working on getting the boilerplate template put together for the, for the RFPs, and so there'll be a boilerplate on front, and then we can put the scopes for different things, food assistance, rental assistance, food distribution, hiring the homeless, so we're, that's what we're working on right now.
Okay, perfect, awesome.
Yeah. Council colleagues, do we have any more questions?
And that is homeless and housing, that's our strategy.
I do have some questions, though.
Okay, ca- council, can you please help me facilitate this, because we're all over the damn place? If you want to speak, can you like punch up so I can get a queue going here and we can do it in order? I feel like I'm in the middle of my third grade class that I was teaching fifteen years ago. All right, Councilmember Adias.
For the record, I had punched up, but I'll let that one slide, I won't take it personal.
Followed by Councilmember Carabasi.
Uh, a couple of things. Restrooms, I know you kind of glanced at them, but it's a big deal, uh, for folks, and especially in the downtown area where there isn't too many public restrooms, and this building's not open either. Um, when do you anticipate actually having some restrooms delivered or secured and implementing that, that, that conversation?
Yeah, so the, the plan right now with the, with the budget we're putting together, and it's really a DPU function we're gonna work on, is they'll be delivering the shower facilities for the hygiene, and then we're just gonna contract for the porta potties, we'll just bring porta potties to those sites as well and just contract for those, because there's plenty of vendors that we can just get them in, roll them in, okay, take them gone, and then we'll take our trailer to another location and order more porta potties there.
And when do you think that's gonna be ready?
That'll be July first is what we're-
July first?
Yep.
For budgeting or for implementation?
For implementation, is, I got staff kind of looking at right now how to purchase them and just-
Perfect, thank you. Um, on the motels, just the way we discussed the whole RFP, I know we've gotten a lot of people offering their motels too, and the only thing I'd caution you with, um, and I'm, I'm not yet there to continue to, to rent private motels, what I've seen is, the homeless issue's gonna continue to increase, we'll have more homeless in future years, not less, and if we just continue to rent private motels, we're not building any permanent capacity. So I prefer to engage in the purchase and acquisition of the facilities so that we can turn it to affordable housing at some point, um, versus simply renting private motels. I, I still have, uh, PTSD from Motel Drive and walking into all those motels where people are charging fifteen hundred dollars and two thousand a month for, you know, poor conditions, and I, I want to make sure we're not renting motels that are not up to health and safety code, and I know right now that we don't have a process. Um, we, this last year, we, um, did quite a bit of resources with Margery Mathen Center, they primarily use private motels, uh, but after this huge investment, we're not gonna have a more permanent capacity for that sector of, of service that we need. So I'd rather encourage you, take the longer route, probably more expensive in the short term, but today, the city has not put one penny of general fund resources, and I think we're gonna have to have that conversation, because I don't think we can sustain this without general fund money at some point. We've been lucky so far that the state and federal government has given us a record amount of money, but I do want to encourage you to find general fund money in the budget to help either increase the scale, or help with the sustainability of some of these facilities. The other, the second point I'd make to you is, on the homeless task force, um, I know there's been discussion about increasing the amount of officers to that team, as you know, the Reform Commission recommended going away from that many officers, um, I know they're needed for backup, I don't know if that's the most fiscally responsible approach, given that they're the most expensive asset we have to respond to homelessness. So I, I, I'm gonna wait to hear from the commission, from U-City Manager, with the work that Smarthen Her Committee been doing, on how we reimagine that, because I simply don't want to do the Heart and Homeless Task Force, and have two efforts that are not-
I agree, we're, we're not gonna, the Heart will replace Homeless Task Force, there will be no Homeless Task Force roughly after July first.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, I think I've been harping on this for a while, I still haven't seen another, um, homeless solution in another part of the city outside of District Three, so I, I think our district has done their part, probably more than any other part of the city, for sure. So, um, please look at other places, uh, location is important, there are, I'm very conscious of, we have motels that are surrounded by industry that are the best fit for a certain type of population, like the pedophiles that need to be held somewhere. If, if those are the, um, kind of populations and locations that make sense, I'm happy to accommodate more, but I really want you to focus on location matters, um, and that we have to be conscious of the populations, and we can't put kids and families in the same facility as adults who have mental health conditions. Uh, from what I've seen on the street, most of the individuals that we have now, um, have some severe mental health, you know, challenges, and like the mayor pointed out, we're not in a situation where we control county services, you know, all within us, I mean, I think that's a succession conversation for another day, but, um, we do gotta figure out how to close that mental health gap, because that's gonna be a severe challenge, especially as we house more people, and the ones that are left behind are the ones who've chosen not to take the housing to help for a variety of reasons, so we gotta be very thoughtful about that mental health support. So, in closing, Mayor, I'm looking forward to a North Fresno shelter in the coming days.
All right, Councilmember-
Don't you love identity politics, doesn't it help get things done?
Councilmember Carabasi, you're punched up?
Thank you.
You're our last speaker.
Yeah, so, um, City Manager, uh, I just want to state, I, I'm, a lot of hours clearly went into this project, and you've been just over a hundred days, right, on the job?
Hundred days, hundred ten.
So we've had a night and day just shift in this city, addressing the homelessness issue, and it's not dealing with it, it's really addressing it, and I think that you and the mayor deserve a great deal of praise for that.
Mayor.
Right, well, but the issue with what we were seeing on the freeways, um, now, there's a lot more to it, but there's been definite, definite, definite start, and the fact that you can go out there and you can get people to actually agree to get off that area and actually go into one of these facilities, it's a big deal. So I want to start the baseline by acknowledging, you guys are doing a very good job, and thank you for that. I'm sure there's a lot of people-
Thank you.
-working doing that. Um, but, you know, we, we're talking about cahoots, we're talking about special populations, um, and there's a couple of special populations I'd like to talk about, if you just allow me to get my notes. So, you talk about, um, the low-barrier shelters, can you pull up that slide?
Yep. Uh, I think I can.
And we talked a bit about this last week at the meeting, um, and I think right now it seems like the, the strategy right that we have based right now, at least is getting people off the streets out of the elements. But, what is your, what is the, the, the city's definition of homelessness versus chronic homelessness? I think it's used interchangeably sometimes, but do we as a city, and, at least policy-wise, I know it comes from the council, do we have a difference there?
So right now, the, the, the main motivation is populations in areas, let's get them taken care of, and then what we're, we have these great partners, we have Turning Point and some of these others that are then helping us to navigate, you have a special need, we're gonna, you, put you here, we're gonna treat you, so we're relying on the partners to kind of help us define the services that they need, uh, and the support that they need to, to kind of get to the next level. But right now for us, it's, this is the area we're trying to move homeless, let's get in there, and we're geography-based right now, and then relying on our partners to help us.
Okay. Um, so I think this was alluded to earlier, and we talked about special populations, there is the LGBTQ community, there's, um, obviously, we talked about domestic violence last week, um, there are families with children. So, what are we doing right now, even with this plan that's geo-based, to address those special populations?
So right now, let me just get to that slide you wanted to see, um, right now, the, so what we're hearing from our, our partners, I'll give you an example, so like, uh, Turning Point, they told us they had about four hundred people that they were currently managing, and that kind of fluctuates, uh, on their system, most of them are children. It was surprising to me of the number of children that are actually taking part and being part of this Home Key project, these, the off-ramp program.
Right.
I, I, I mean, I'll be honest, I was surprised, it's a lot. So that's a special population that we've, we've got to look at now and say, hey, there may be some other model here we need to adjust to, and that's part of, as we buy new assets and bring new stuff onboard, can we start to make these segregations?
Right. So what I'm trying to understand, though, is who is really advocating for these children? I mean, who, I mean, who here, um, policy-wise, is going to be looking out for them? Is it the provider? Is it, I mean, obviously, they have parents, or they're in a certain situation, but who do we envision doing that to make sure they're getting their socio-emotional needs?
Yeah, and so that's gonna be our providers, we're gonna rely on the, the specialty expertise of our providers to help guide us on that, on that process.
Okay. Do we have a list of the triage providers we have?
Uh, that would be back here, I think.
Thank you for doing that. No, no, take your time.
There it is, not, not this one.
I think we're almost there.
Our partners. Sorry. Had a lot of arrows, this one.
There we go.
Yep, so these are the folks that, man, these people are making it happen for us right now.
Right now, a lot of great, a lot of great folks on there. Um, so, just in terms of quality control, are we, these are all twenty-four-hour providers, so are we actually ca- it may sound silly, but are we calling to make sure that, three in the morning, if someone calls, there actually is someone there to answer the phone, to actually get them help? And I'll tell you why I'm asking that in a second.
So there's twenty-four-hour security at these places, and so they do have access to contact information, if there's something that's occurring on the site, so we have made that available.
I'll put it this way, so we talked about domestic violence or child abuse, so, in effect, you and I had an experience with this, where, here's what I envision, and this actually happened once when I was on a ride along, I know we talk about that a lot, but it's Friday night, it's eight o'clock, government services are closed, and an officer sees a situation. So let's say you have a mom, or someone who's a victim of domestic violence, and they suddenly make the decision they want to get out of there, and that, it's ve- that's a very difficult point to get there, because they've probably been a victim for a long time, the person has power over them, so, will that, my, I, I mean, the officers I've spoken with, there's one organization they regularly call in that situation, and they're staff twenty-four hours. My question is, you know, and I understand the homeless task force issue, but the fact is, our officers, our firefighters, even our code folk, they're the ones out there, and kind of like a mandated reporter, when they see something and someone reaches out to them, we want to make sure they can get help. So, what are we doing to ensure these services are available, so that the police can say, okay, well, I have the situation, I, you know, I can call this person, or I can call that person, and get them at least triaged, and get them out of that environment?
Right, so here's your low-barrier shelter-
Mm-hmm.
...data, and so, again, it's, part of what we need to do is make sure we continue to invest and make sure these are available for folks, and it's the last one.
Right.
Space is limited, and we're trying to get everybody, and sometimes they just have to turn people away, or they just have to let people know prior to coming, yeah, I, I don't have any of your space, and that's, that's that challenge we've got right now.
I think from a law enforcement standpoint, though, it's really difficult, because we talk about wanting to improve things, but our officers face the trauma of going call, the call, the call, and they don't get any closure. But if, like we have, we reserve beds for, for auto thieves while in a positive light, do we need to reserve beds for victims of domestic violence or victims of, uh, some kind of situation? And like, you know, I, I just met with a group in the LGBTQ community, sometimes your family just kicks you out, and you're in crisis. Now, EOC has a good program, but is that something that we, we can address in what we're talking about?
Yeah, I think, I think the challenge we've got right now is we just don't have enough capacity to make, to make those kind of allocations. We're just so inundated with people right now, that we're, if we receive them, and they, or they can make it to one of these facilities and they can get in, awesome, but if they can't, then they're gonna wind up being on the street like the model we showed, can't get you to housing, if I can't get you into housing, I can't get you out of the shelter, and then, so people are staying on the street.
Okay, so let me just sum it up this way, then, and I, I really appreciate, um, you know, what you're doing and your help in explaining this. Who can I work with at the city to ensure that these special populations that are extra vulnerable, that I would, I use the term situationally homeless, not the traditional homeless, that they can have access to something when they need it? Um, and I, I think, again, we all want the same thing, but we're geo-based now, how can we ensure that these folks, if they need help, can get it and it's secured? Granted, space is limited, I get that, but we, I think we have to kind of, um-
So give you an example, so here's what I'm hearing, as a possibility, so we have these, uh, motels that we converted.
Mm-hmm.
So one model you would suggest is that, like, the, like the mayor's using when he was a police chief, at the, save these five beds-
Right.
-we're gonna pay for them, and when you run into this population-
Right.
-make space available. So that's a model, but we just don't have enough capacity right now to do that, but that's a model we could go to as we add three, six, five more hotels, and the key is get the housing built on the backend, we gotta get people into stable apartment housing.
That's the next line of questioning I have, absolutely. So, so, we identify there's an issue, we just need more capacity, okay. Um, now, affordable housing, I'm glad you segwayed perfectly into that. So, everyone, no, that's good, whereas we're on the same page, everyone has a different definition, but what does affordable housing mean? And can you pull up the, uh, finances about how much it costs to convert one of those units?
Yep.
Because that is incredibly, uh, impressive, I mean, talk about being affordable to the taxpayer with services, the cost per unit. I understand it's not, you know, something LEED certified, but, but, um, that, uh, that makes a big difference. A lot more, a lot more value for the money. So, what does affordable housing mean to this city?
So I think we, as mayor and I have been talking with folks around the community, I think there's two ways to look at the affordable housing, that what we characterize as publicly subsidized affordable housing, where it has covenants, restrictions, and these are the people that are allowed to live here, and there's their incumbent restrictions. So we see those projects all the time, there are a lot of application for the home money, the HUD money, all these different dollars. The other form of affordable housing we're looking at is just scale the, scale the product to match the market condition, so it's these four hundred, six hundred, eight hundred square-foot units, that just by the nature of their size, makes them affordable. But even right now, if we put that stuff on the market right now, it get gobbled up, it's twelve hundred dollars a month-
Right.
-and so we just don't have enough of that, but that's the other affordable we're looking at, is just, it's market rate affordable, because it's scaled smaller than two thousand square-foot ranch houses.
Right, and I think I, I wanted to get to that, because I know it's a really sensitive issue, but, but land use is half the job we do as council members, and, you know, affordable housing that you talked about in the first category where it's government subsidized, that is important, I think we're always gonna have to do an element of that, but I don't think it's a long-term solution. And you talked about helping people with down payment assistance, getting them on their own feet, but in some cases, in some populations, that's always just gonna be the way it is, especially if a mental health issue, and we don't have really a statewide inpatient Especially if a mental health issue, and we don't have really a statewide inpatient or comprehensive service. But when it comes to the market rate, what are we doing to ensure we're increasing supply? I know there's, of course, an interest in that, but that's the issue, is that, we talked about this before, statewide, we're, we're low, ten, I think it was ten million units, and we haven't really done a lot as a state. And of course, lumber prices are skyrocketing, and VMTs, and then there's, and that's gonna raise prices too. And that's changing everything. So what, what can we do as local community to ensure we increase supply?
And so that's part of what we're recommending, is the, the housing development plan. Basically, build a capital program around all the properties we have around the city, just like we would do a capital plan, parks, fire stations, police stations. We're gonna build a capital plan, and it's gonna be these four, six hundred unit type scale to make them affordable. We gotta flood the market with that kinda product. And so our job, as we're recommending, is we'll take care of the entitlements, we'll take care of the neighbors, we'll have those discussions, we'll take care of the offsites, get the map, get the property entitled, and then bring in developed builders and say, all right, this is ready for you to go. Start building stuff on this property. We've cleared the decks for you. All you gotta do is build it.
Right. And unlike the comment that was made earlier, let's put homeless housing in Northwest, North Fresno. I, I really hope that we get some of these quality, great neighborhoods and infrastructure dollars in Southwest Fresno too, because everyone deserves to be taken care of. No identity politics, just good public service. Thank you.
Tommy, I'd like you to touch on the importance of being ministerial approval versus.
Yeah, good point. So one of the things we're, we're toying with is the idea, and we wanna, we need to bring it to you. We just need to bring it to you. We gotta, so I'll go back to the comment you made about the publicly subsidized affordable housing.
Sure, thank you.
So it is affordable, but it takes forever. And it's just the time it takes. So time is not our friend right now, as we look at trying to build new housing. So we're putting together a plan, working with some builders, to look at bringing to get, bringing forward to you a plan to build maybe a thousand housing units, more than a thousand housing units, all around the city, pre-approved. We'll go through the EIR, we'll take care of all the entitlements, and, and ask you as a council to authorize the administration to approve those administratively. You'll have seen them all, they'll have all been in front of you, will have seen the quality and the quantity, and the streets, and the, you'll see all that stuff. Once you approve it, and we get the EIR done for that, we'd like to then go with the buildings, start building this stuff. So the ministerial is one of, and again, we would not do that across the whole city. There'd be these very focused areas that we would wanna build this kinda housing, and so that could, we, we talked, oh, actually.
Tommy, we had that conversation.
President Chavez was on the call.
And, and I think, you know, one of the, I think, first steps in having that conversation is to work with the council members, so that we can all agree where these areas will be. And what you're discussing is by right, which we know what that means. We wanna make sure that that's done, you know, right, and in the way that incorporates the community. And so that, that's one of the things I think we're gonna be working through, those conversations beforehand, because council members have a great pulse on what's going on in their neighborhoods, what fits where, the neighborhood meetings, the groups. And so I think having that on the forefront will be very helpful into what you're discussing.
Yeah.
Councilmember Adias, for the, for the time.
Yes, thank you. I, I do wanna reaffirm a couple points that Member Carabasi made around market rate housing across the city. Completely agree with him, but I also wanna foreshadow for the administration, it's gonna be a heavy lift. You know, my district implementation committee yesterday just reviewed a proposal for five hundred market rate units in West Fresno by the college campus, and it was rejected because they prefer single-family housing, even though the area is zoned for multifamily. So Mayor and City Manager, I wanna prepare you, this is gonna not be an easy lift. You can't open the door, and then when the, it gets hot in the kitchen, shut it, and then throw the council under the bus, because it's too hard and we gotta have difficult conversations. So I wanna prepare you all for, it will be a hard lift, not just in Southwest Fresno, in Southeast and Central and North Fresno. Higher density still is something new for this city. Not everybody's gonna embrace it fully. And if we're gonna go down the path of administrative approval, we gotta be prepared to have those conversations upfront, and address some other, other issues that I believe are the reason for, you know, the pushback. A lot of offsite improvements, a lot of roads that are deteriorated, you know, in, in that project. If we put in five hundred units, the road's gotta be fixed, because they're already crumbling. So we, and that's something unrelated to the project. So the city's gonna have to come forward with some willingness to address some of the offsite issues that the community's gonna bring up. So I, I wanna be fully supportive of the approach, because we have to build more. To your example on that slide, we have an output problem. There is no output of affordable housing, whether it's market rate or traditional affordable to put people in. So we're gonna have to address how we build and the concerns that neighbors have.
And that's the exact discussion we have with the homeless. I, I said almost exactly the same thing to them. I said, okay, if we're gonna do this, we're gonna get some reaction from the communities, and we need to work together to make sure we address those, those issues. So yeah, we, we a hundred percent agree that it's gonna be a big lift.
Does that conclude your comments, Councilmember Adias? All right. Tommy, I'll just be very brief for the sake of time, because it's now three o'clock, and we thought we were gonna have a half-day. You know, for me on my end, I think, and I've been, I'm gonna circle back to where the conversation started. I, I think the city's priority and direction should be to actually purchase these hotels, so that the city owns them. We own the equity, we have control over them, and, and for this following reason. Because one of the biggest challenges of dealing with the homeless issue, having been here a decade now, is that Ninth Circuit ruling, that says that you cannot move an individual that's considered homeless or transient without having space or room available for them elsewhere.